Here.
Leah Colaschelizari.
Here.
Erin Chanding.
Here.
Katie Carum.
Here.
Steve Wang.
Here.
All right, thank you and welcome to our May 17th board meeting. We will start with the pledge of allegiance, but I'm going to turn over to Dr. Hunt to introduce our star students.
So as the board knows, we every month we recognize students throughout the district that are just doing exemplary things and today I have the opportunity to have a fifth grader from Sunny Hill with us today. So Anique Sowell, would you come on up please? And I told her that the Sunny Hill had a lot of very nice things to say about her and she wanted to know what it was and I said, "You can't steal the thunder here."
Taking all those compliments.
That's right. So Anna is described as an exemplary Sunny Hill student. She daily demonstrates and represents the three Bs. What are the three Bs?
Be responsible, be respectful, and be courteous.
She knows them and she personifies the spirit of Sunny Hill every day. She's kind, she's compassionate, she's always has kind words for her classmates and is always willing to help others. She provides social emotional support for peers, having a sense for finding those that may be having a down day. She lives each day with empathy and grace and has a maturity that is beyond her years. She's proud of her heritage and proud of being bilingual. Anna's the type of student who brings joy into the room upon her entrance. Everyone at Sunny Hill and the school district is very proud of you and we're so proud that she's a Sunny Hill Tiger. So let's give her a big round of applause. So we have a special treat tonight. We are going to be led in the pledge of allegiance and we're going to do it in English and in Spanish. So please stand.
Whenever you're ready. If any of you want to stand a little bit closer to the microphones so everybody can hear you. No clear.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's give her one more big round of applause and you stay right there because we're going to send you through the picture.
Your mom did it, plus she didn't really. Why don't you come front and center? Mental note for next time, let's have the Spanish up on the screen. That would be helpful. Okay, so next up is we've got some more recognitions. So Dr. Hunt, would you like to continue? We've got two more? Three more actually, sorry, three more.
So at this point, I'd like to introduce Kelly Key. She's our district assistive technology coordinator. She's been in the district for 16 years. She's been in her role for 16 years. How am I doing? Okay.
Better?
And I have you at 23, so. She's going to introduce our early childhood students that recently won a very prestigious award. So thank you for being here, Kelly.
Thank you. Well, hello. I am so excited to introduce you all to Jacob. Jacob's sitting over here with his family and in a little bit, we're hoping to have him come up if he feels comfortable. But Jacob is five years old. He attends the Barrington Early Learning Center and Jacob uses an app on an iPad called Lamp Words for Life. It's a pretty robust, pretty sophisticated app and we introduced it to him to help support his communication and he picked it up immediately and saw the power of using it to help support him in communication and using it as his voice. And he's not only able to communicate his wants and his needs and answer questions, he also is able to share his amazing personality and he is hilarious, right? You have to admit. He was really funny. So because he's done so well and so young with this very robust app, we nominated him for the Infinitec Outstanding Use of Assistive Technology Award. There's hundreds and hundreds of applicants and he was one of, I think maybe like 15, that were awarded the 2022 award. And we attended, his family, his team and myself all attended the award ceremony last month. And in a moment, we're going to see if he will come up. It is his bedtime and he's a little shy, but we'll see if he will come up in a moment. But before we have him come up, we're actually going to show a video that was shared at the award ceremony that will share a little bit more about who Jacob is and why he won the award.
Jacob is five years old and attends the Barrington Early Learning Center School in District 220. Jacob has many wonderful characteristics. He is hardworking, friendly and socially driven. A boy who enjoys interacting with staff members and friends in his early childhood classroom. He is always first to greet everybody when they arrive and he is quick to share a story from home. To help him do this, he uses an iPad with the Lamp Words for Life app. Jacob is very independent. He is motivated to initiate interactions, communicate his basic wants and needs, share his academic knowledge and talk about his favorite foods. He demonstrates a great interest in wanting to learn more words in his device and remembers their location after being shown their paths only one or two times. He has a beautiful smile and infectious giggle and enjoys telling jokes and making others laugh. Jacob loves to play with his friends. He likes to be chased, play with balls, climb and crawl through tunnels. In addition, he enjoys playing in the kitchen area, at the water table and with shaving cream. His teachers say that Jacob is an absolute ray of sunshine, brightening everyone and everything around him. He never ceases to amaze them with his persistence and hard work. He is an incredible young man who has accomplished so much and they are very proud of him as he receives his award tonight.
Jacob did have a speech that he gave at the award and he's welcome to come up and give it today if he feels comfortable. Hey buddy? Mom and dad can come up? I've been prepping them all day to say hi to my friends. Jacob, take your time.
Hi Jacob.
Just say buddy, just say hi. That's it. Should we take a picture? Mom, dad, would you like to take a, would you like to at least take a picture? You think, you guys can all come up. Everybody can come up. Maybe we can just stand up where we are. He's comfortable after the picture? All right, ready? One, two, three. Thank you. Thank you Jacob. Congratulations. Thank you Kelly.
And thank you for our staff for being here as well. Appreciate it. At this time, I'm going to introduce Mr. McWilliams who has a few recognitions from Barrington High School this evening.
It's a hard act to follow.
Yes, it is. Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to come and celebrate a few of our students today. We've got an athletic achievement, an academic achievement and a few fine arts achievements that we'd like to recognize this evening. To start off with, I'd like to introduce Ms. Illinois Basketball, Sophie Swanson. For those of you that aren't aware, Ms. Basketball is the most outstanding basketball player in the state of Illinois and Sophie is a junior at Barrington High School and she was a member of our state runner-up team. Sophie had planned to be here this evening, but she found out just recently that she has been selected for the Team USA tryouts. So she is going to be going to US Junior Nationals in a couple of weeks and she's required to do some training to prepare for that. So the coaches have said she needs to be in the best shape of her life. She's one of 32 players from throughout the nation that will be considered for Team USA, Team USA and may have an opportunity to participate across the country and throughout the world this coming summer. So a couple of stats about Sophie or a couple of highlights. She was MSL All-Conference. She was the MSL Player of the Year in the West Division. She's the first team Illinois Basketball Coaches Association All-Stater and she's an All-Stater for the Illinois News Gazette. So please, if she's watching or if we could just pass along the applause to her, please congratulate Sophie. And for those of you that didn't get a chance to see her this year, she will be back on the floor next year and a tremendous team to watch, tremendous program and I hope that you take an opportunity next year to watch the young ladies compete. So congratulations to Sophie. So Sophia Cahn, next. This is the academic piece. So Sophia is amongst a small number of students throughout the world. So she scored a 36 on the ACT. To put this in perspective, about 0.33% of students that take the ACT score a 36. About 1.6 million students took the ACT last year. So it's a pretty elite group. Sophia has participated in marching band at the high school. She's been a member of the orchestra, math team, robotics club and she has been recognized as an ILMEA All-State Band Member. She's earned the Presidential Volunteer Service Award and is an AP Scholar. Please join me in congratulating Sophia for her accomplishments on the ACT and...
Want to see him around? It's amazing. And then you can take a picture. Nicely done. Are we going to go around?
We're going to come around Sophie.
Before?
I guess, thanks to my teachers, our older support, things, past like 12 years in the room. Of course, thanks to my parents.
What are your plans?
I'm attending technology this year.
You've been doing some research on this recently?
Oh, yeah. I guess...
Whatever picture pops up there.
Oh, well, there you go.
So annually, the superintendent and high school principal had the opportunity to walk through the art showcase and designate a piece of art that they felt would move them and they got to display that piece in our office. And I will tell you, it was extremely challenging, but really as I walked around this piece by Madison Edwards just really spoke to me. I'll let her give you the art side because it's up there about her inspiration, but let's first have Madison come on up and congratulate her. Madison, talk about the piece from your perspective and then I'll...
It was kind of like what I drew on the paper, kind of kind of like, and I really wanted to try to capture that in this piece and I kind of wanted to commemorate like the childlike imagination and kind of like how special it is.
That's awesome. It's beautiful. I love it. It's amazing.
So I don't need, I don't need to convey why I chose it because everything she just said is the reason I chose it. It really does bring you back to that time where you were just free to think critically and innovate and create and just reminded me of my own children and them being out and sharing and playing with their friends. But when you look at something and you come into an educational space, this would be perfect. So Madison, congratulations.
Thank you.
What about the bag? Are you gonna?
Ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
I've got like five. Maybe more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Do you want to come up and... Congratulations. I would echo what Dr. Hunt said and these are very difficult decisions to make and please, please present your piece to us.
That picture is of Joshua Tree National Park in California and I've been doing photography for now, this is my fourth year doing darker photography. And I always make a joke, because I always think that all these people make all these meaningful pictures and I'm just taking pictures of rocks and trees and all my pictures are. And I just really love nature and not anything with like man-made objects, just nature itself and how beautiful it is.
It's amazing. It's amazing. What kind of camera did you use?
Black and white especially.
Yeah, it's black and white film.
It's beautiful.
What kind of camera did you use?
A middle to 35 millimeter camera.
So...
It's amazing.
So this, this actually speaks to me because this is, this is my artistic medium too. I actually took a photo at Barrington High School and I am a fan of black and white photography, chemicals. I remember the smell of the fixer and rolling the camera film onto the developing rolls and you know, from a, from a technical perspective, looking at this piece and the contrast that you have and you know, I can only imagine the amount of dodging that you had to do to get, to get everything perfect so that you can get your contrast. So it really spoke to me and you know, it kind of puts you in that space. So I look forward to seeing that every morning and kind of going into that, that happy space with you and thank you for presenting that and giving us the honor of having that at the school for the, for the next year. Congratulations. Great. Thank you. So we have a gift for you. There's some, there's some Barrington High School swag, but there's also a gift certificate that goes along with this so that both of the artists have an opportunity to buy supplies and continue with their, with their arts and their passions.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Together, any comments for moms and dads? All right. Thank you so much. Okay. Bye Jacob. All right. Next up is my report. I guess nobody wants to hear it. I own a camera, but I don't think I can do that. I know I can't.
If I'd have watched you do it, it would have taken me back.
Well, I will be, I'm going to go ahead and give my report. It's pretty brief and it's mostly to the board here. So, as everybody knows, our Framework 220 conversation, coffee and conversation is, is coming, started last night. So Janine, you're gonna, can you give us a Google form to make sure that board members at least have a chance to sign, sign up for the coffee and conversation? And then that way we can make sure we stay in compliance with Open Meetings Act and so forth. And no, we don't have any, any conflicts there. That would be great. Also, Janine gave us two dates for a board workshop this summer, and neither one of them looked like they were going to work. So Janine, I'm going to ask, and Dr. Hunt is going to ask, that we look at maybe August 16th, which is our scheduled board meeting in August? Maybe we could start a few hours early for, because we know everybody's going to be here that day already? And see if maybe that might work? I think they would probably three hours, at least three hours. We could ask IASB what they want. And then as a reminder, on June 7th, we're going to start five minutes earlier.
Five minutes earlier.
Five minutes. Start at 5:00 PM, 30 minutes earlier.
Okay.
I can't even read my own writing here, my own typing. So let us know if you've got a conflict. I haven't, we haven't heard of any yet. So we will see you at 5:00 PM on June 7th. And then last, just another reminder, haven't heard from anybody about an IASB resolution? If we wanted to do one of those, they are due in, on June 22nd. So if anybody has any ideas there, we need to probably share them across the board sooner rather than later. And that is all I had for my report. So next up is public comment. So we've come to a portion of our meeting we set aside for public comment. We value your thoughts and opinions, and in accordance with board policy, we ask you to state your name, elementary attendance area, or relationship to the district before beginning your comments. Tonight, since we have less than 20 speakers, we will limit your comments to three minutes. And we've got the countdown timer. We will ensure that all voices are respected and heard in accordance with the Board Equity Statement that states we recognize, embrace, and defend identities, abilities, and voices of our diverse school community. And per board, board policy, the school district expects mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct among all people on school property. We are committed to addressing issues and not attacking people, and we ask the community to do likewise. So with that, I'm going to call up Paul Rednicki.
Good evening. My name's Paul Rednicki. I have a fourth grader at Countryside and a freshman at the high school. I was heartened to and happy to get the draft of the Framework 220 priorities that came out of the strategic session. What hit me about those is that four of the six of the strategic priorities focus in some way, shape, or form on social emotional learning. As the board continues to hear updates and consider the pending strategic plan, I ask you please to keep the focus on building these skills in our students. It is these social emotional skills that will empower students to be successful in the diverse world in which we live, along with, you know, the academic skills. But at the core, the world is full of people. So learning how to handle and deal with people is absolutely key. Also, social emotional skills help normalize the prioritization of mental health. These skill sets also help prioritize the neurodiverse needs of students within our school district. Having these skills will help students who need help know it's okay to ask for help and feel, feel good about it, right? Not feel isolated about it. It's also going to help students that maybe don't need any particular help or aren't, you know, in need of any special supports, to help support those that do need help by letting that, that feel normal to them. Okay? So I think those are important skills in the classroom, out of the classroom, on the playground, in a lot of different ways. Also, looking at the learner profile, I couldn't really pick out any, any, all, all of them have some sort of a social emotional skill at the root, or at the root of that learner profile in all facets. I'd like to focus on the one that's titled empathizes. This is the key skill that we need to pass on to our students. Demonstrating and teaching empathy towards others is one of the keys to eliminating the hate we see in the world today. Being able to put yourself in someone else's shoes, or at least try and have that perspective, is super helpful in dealings with others. So again, as the board continues to, to look at that plan and hear these coffee conversations and, and consider the next steps for our school district, I think those are key things to keep at the forefront. Thank you.
Paul? And that actually concludes our public comment for tonight. So next I'll turn it over to Dr. Hunt for his report.
Thank you and good evening. I will start with the first slide. It's a, just an update for the Board of Education on our summer school program. You know, one of the things, obviously, when I was transitioning, you know, last spring coming to Barrington, I was following the website, looking at different things. And the, the quality and quantity of the offerings for our students in the summer is just amazing. And I'm very excited to report that we have over 2,000 students in our school district that are going to participate in some capacity within our summer school programming. Some of this may be review for some of the board members, but maybe for, for some of our newer board members. That includes a variety of offerings. At our Early Learning Center, we'll have the Extended School Year, which is designated to help and maintain previously acquired skills by students. It really targets early childhood instruction, speech, language therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy, and a continuation of services for our students. At our elementary, we have a program that's really balanced on continuation, introduction of math and reading, maybe the next level, and a number of creative and enriching courses. I can tell you, I have two young children at home who are very excited about taking art camp and being a part of the drama camp. And I will let you decide which of my two children are the dramatic one. But I'm just extremely excited about having that opportunity. We offer an elementary jumpstart to dual language. This program is for incoming grade level support for reading, math, and English language development. It's got dual language and one-way immersion as well. Middle school course offerings range from skill enhancement to learning acceleration through enrichment opportunities and the exploration of new and unique interests, in addition to a wide variety of camps and activities, athletic camps as well. And then, of course, at the high school, we have offerings that are hands-on elective, like video production, photography, and drawing, as well as painting, and then traditional curriculum design to advanced, like business exploration, health, and honors chemistry. Was happy to see, it looks like the Illinois Virtual School is going to run. I know that was a question for a while there for, for health, for high school students. Yeah, I think, again, when, when you're in a place for some period of time, you take for granted the things that you have in place. This, this is a culmination of a tremendous amount of work by our staff that we have, you know, just to prepare and offer these things. But also to have staff and teaching staff that's willing to step forward and do these things in the summer speaks largely to how much they care about young people. So just wanted to update you on that. And as we are offering things for our students, we are also offering a variety of programming for our teaching staff for their own professional development. We'll be offering 57 courses over the summer. And of our staff, we have 600 total staff enrolled in the summer university courses that will help them grow as professionals and us grow as a school district. They're offered a variety of modalities, both in-person, virtual, and blended. And they'll run between June and all the way through August, open to all of our staff members, and we're still having them register. A variety of the topics, as some of them revolve around assessment discussions, inquiry-based entrepreneurship, health, leadership, literacy, math, race equity and inclusion, science and social emotional learning. And Dr. Byrne and I are going to collaborate on a book study on leadership and leadership development as well. So just very excited for this summer, for the growth for our students and our staff. And I appreciate the support of the board to offer these things to, to our staff and students. Wanted to address quickly this evening, we've had a variety of emails, and I know the board has gotten some questions as well regarding honors coursework at the high school. And obviously, Mr. Nick Williams can jump in to support and help this as, you know, as needed. There, there has been a reduction of two honors classes, one in global studies and one in physics. I know the board got some information, some background on this, but essentially, I think they both fall into the categories of, as our teachers go through a curriculum cycle, which Dr. Byrne presented to the board, that they, they realized or came to the realization that the content and curriculum in the traditional honors course really aligned with what the AP offering was. And it made sense for us to, you know, encourage students that, you know, wanted to stretch and take that to go ahead and expose themselves and access the advanced placement opportunities. So different years in which these have gone away over the last couple of years. But I wanted to give you some context with that in terms of the high school. And we also provided an update on middle school honors math as well, and really an effort for the district to allow more students to attain or reach algebra in eighth grade, which will allow them to access higher level math and rigor as they go through the, the high school. So I wanted to pause and see if you had any questions regarding honors specifically that you would receive that we can help clarify.
I just want to make, just reiterate that it's not all honors classes, there's just a couple that have been reduced, but they meet the criteria as AP courses.
Is it physics and English? The two?
Physics and global studies.
Do we have any that are being cut for next year?
I don't believe so, Steve.
So the physics was actually, if you looked at the memo, was a reduction several years ago. The course that is not being offered next year is physics, but it wasn't an honors, traditional honors class. It was supposed to be an on-road, it was a pilot that we were running as an on-road to AP science courses. And it, the data was not indicating that it was working in that direction. So we're actually going back to where we were about five years ago when AP initially started an AP Physics 1, 2, and then an advanced AP. So that AP Physics 1 took the place of the honors course, which, which fits into the criteria that Dr. Hunt just presented.
Not to argue with you guys, because I absolutely think you know what you're talking about, but we have, I, I am hearing from parents that a full, a different story. So would it be possible perhaps to maybe, like over the course of five years, just publish what honors courses have been offered? And I mean, just
Katie, is five years even enough? Because it sounds to me like this
I'd go more, but I don't want
It sounds to me like this physics course was a couple of years ago. Did you say two or three years ago? Is that what I heard?
It's been, we, we reimplemented the transition or the pilot program to help support students build skills to get into AP courses about three years ago. It was just before COVID. But prior to that, when they implemented, when AP implemented a three-level AP class, AP 1, AP 2, and AP C, that was, that was the time when we eliminated the AP, I'm sorry, the honors physics course, because that aligned to our current honors course.
Was it pulling that together? Is that feasible, Steve?
That actually was part of the memo. But yeah, we, we can re-highlight some of those pieces.
I have it up. I mean, so is this something we can just publish on?
Well, we publish, we have the course catalog, right? Which shows what offerings we do have. Is, is that enough to show that we've got some?
Are you referencing?
I guess I'm trying to compare where we were five, 10 years ago with where we are now. Because what I'm hearing from parents is that they're, and I, 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 I'm, what I'm hearing, whether or not it's happening.
To answer your question, you can look back historically because the course catalogs do exist historically.
Okay. I'm hearing that they feel that children are being, honors classes are being removed, and your only track is either regular class or an AP class, and that not everyone has the ability to take five AP classes or four AP classes. They, so I, and I'm not saying that, so I just feel like if we are able to put the, access the information, then, then we can answer those questions.
I think we can better answer now, too. The reason that we don't have the honors is because the honors course is giving the same rigor that the AP courses are giving, so.
We'll figure out how to best put that together.
So we, so just to confirm, junior English honors has not been removed. Is that correct?
When was that removed? A few years ago.
That has been removed. What about freshman and sophomore honors English classes for next year? Are there plans to remove that?
Next school year? No. Next school year for '20 to '23, you offer freshman English and freshman English honors, as well as sophomore English and sophomore
Okay. Are, is there any plans to do away with that in, say, two years? Or is that still the commitment of, of the, the direction of the honors classes?
Is this always part of the curriculum reduction cycle?
Hmm, it's analysis. So I think we just had actual senior exit interviews today, and they brought up some points. It's something that we, we want to consider in terms of what are some different onroads or some different options for students specifically looking at honors classes. They gave us some, some, some feedback about our curriculum altogether, and certainly some things that we need to look at, so.
Was that like having more access to honors classes or?
I think we need to evaluate the, the rigor across the board to make sure that every student has an opportunity to be in the most appropriate classes. So, so I don't think anything is off the table. But the, the decisions were made based on an analysis of student achievement data, placement data, and not being able to differentiate between a student that was in an honors class or an AP class, specifically in global studies, and specifically in that AP Physics 1 class and the physics, honors physics. So again, that honors physics that was put into place that's being removed for next year, that's the most dramatic change next year, was because that was a pilot program specifically targeted at students that we were trying to accelerate into AP science classes. And the data didn't play out that it was doing that. It wasn't, it wasn't being purposeful.
So what about the junior English honors? What was the rationale behind removing that?
If you look at junior English honors, there are actually a number of courses, again, that kind of fit into that sequence. There's AP Lang, that's an opportunity for students. There's Intro to Research, an AP class that goes along with that as well. So there are options for students that, again, align with that honors rigor in terms of doing some, some cross-referencing with it. So it wouldn't be an acceptable removal of that honors class if the only choice was honors Lang or honors interrelated arts, which is probably a little bit more rigorous. But when we look at the research course, and we look at that tracks towards senior seminar, it, it does give students an appropriate course that, that aligned with our it does give students an appropriate course that aligned with our honors level class.
And then environmental science, is that honors class still being offered next year as well?
Dual credit and AP, yes.
Dual credit means, so is it, it's an honors class then?
No.
No?
It's weighted at an AP level class.
Okay. So it's weighted, you get like a grade, half a grade up or whatever. Okay, got it. And then advanced topics in U.S. history, is that honors class still being offered next year? Advanced topics in U.S. history?
U.S. history, that course was, that honors was, it was honors by course. So we had honors and average together, and then you would, I'm sorry, honors and AP together. That was, that was taken away several years ago. So again, we can go back and sequence all of that together. It's in the memo that we shared with you.
Well, you know, and I think that as, you know, we're just, we respond to the community. Obviously, we have similar conversations here time and time again, but I think that, you know, some community members, and I think the board as a whole has shared concern as far as, we are so good at targeting the top. We are so good at targeting those who are struggling. And it's sometimes those that are like under that, you know, that AP, you know, situation that need a little boost, that need a little assistance. And we've heard from, you know, our discussions and our learner profile meetings and all of this, that it kind of becomes a recurrent theme in our district. And I think that parents, and as an aside, can I just say how awesome it is? We're talking about like classes and education again.
Yeah, no kidding.
Instead of other stuff. But, you know, I think that parents, when, when they're, you know, looking at their kids', you know, options, and they see that the, you know, the word honors is gone, well then that's, you know, that's kind of scary, because that, you know, maybe that's that kid that, you know, should they take all AP classes? Probably not, you know, that's, that's a lot of work, but they do want to sprinkle in some honors and some AP and to have that option. And when, you know, it starts to, you know, be taken away, or they see that the course catalog is changing, then, you know, we start to get emails and calls and concern. And I don't want this to seem like we're trying to, you know, micromanage anything. You guys do an amazing job providing a wonderful educational experience from pre-K through, you know, post-12. But, you know, we are just trying to be responsive as far as, you know, this issue in particular, because it's come up, you know, my eight years on the board, time and time and time again, just, you know, wanting to continue to push those kids that maybe are, you know, not quite ready to be in AP, but also are probably could use a little push beyond just, you know, the regular core classes, so that's the question.
Just respond, that's exactly what we look at when we're developing these course sequences, so that we don't have overlaps. So when something goes away, it is looking at data, it is looking at what the course offerings are. So it's not that honors is being taken away, it's that there is a comparable option that fits along with, with that piece. So the title of dual credit, yes, but it matched with our honors curriculum. So we're not trying to have students take courses that aren't appropriate for them. We're trying to find that nice sweet spot where they're challenged and they're growing. And, and as we look at the curriculum, as we look at those courses that we offer, that's exactly what we're trying to do. And when we see where we've got those significant overlaps, that's where those decisions, decisions are made.
Yeah. And I think that, you know, maybe even in the course catalogs, when there's a, you know, an elimination of a class or something, even like just a little notation, you know, potentially replaced by whatever, just to, you know, like, I think it continues to bolster the continuity of the path that, you know, the kid is on and, and that they can, you know, they're still reaching for the highest level, but not to feel that pressure, ah, that pressure, I've got to take the AP class, I've got to take it, or else, there's not another option. And, you know, just to kind of point those out, maybe, again, you guys are the experts. But just, you know, the feedback that we've been getting is, is a little bit of trepidation, feeling that some of those classes that would hit that kind of middle ground may not be offered, but it's nice to hear that there are other options to, you know, replace those. And I don't, I just don't know if that's being as understood as completely as maybe it should be.
And I won't, I won't speak to the, kind of the evolution of the district over the last 10 years, but I can say, you know, there's a philosophical conversation to be had, and a lot of districts are having it around, as access to dual credit comes, that that really fits that niche of honors. And then it becomes about communication, right? What are the benefits? What's the curriculum? How does that align? And making sure that in the spring, if we have any changes, they're coming to you as part of a curriculum review, and we're demonstrating and showing that to you. So that, that will happen.
So are the comparable courses generally dual credit courses then, not AP, or is it a combination of those?
I would imagine it's a combination.
It's a combination.
Okay. And so far, the fit has been okay for the students who would have taken the eliminated honors classes, or?
If we didn't think the fit was there, we wouldn't have made the changes. So, so to answer the question, yes. So it is research-based, it is based on the students, it's based on their experience, their grades, their performance, and the courses that we offer. So it is, you know, there is the humanistic side of it for sure, but there also is a very scientific, you know, looking at achievement data, understanding how our students are growing in comparative courses. So, and it's something we look very closely at in terms of what our students are having access to, and, you know, do we have an opportunity for all students to grow and, you know, accelerate their learning essentially? That's, that's what we're looking for, is those different options, those different, those different pathways for students.
One thing I also wanted to mention is that we are listening to this feedback and really taking the time to hear it. And we have to do a really good job of supporting our students in not only selecting their courses, but stepping through a process of course planning and post-secondary planning. And that process starts and should start sooner than freshman year. So part of what we're doing at the high school and re-envisioning some of these roles is what support are we giving our middle school and high school counselors, as well as our families, to increase their awareness of not only the offerings that are available to our students, but how does this fit into either a career pathway or a post-secondary plan? Or what makes sense? Is it an honors course? Is it AP? Or is it dual credit? And doing that work upfront is really going to help in the long run in ensuring that our counselors are supported, so it's not just a process that begins in November and says, here's your sheet, pick your classes, but what are your plans long-term?
Having a freshman, I have to tell you, that is so reassuring, and I know we came off of a weird year, and I also, but, because I was going to say perhaps to your credit, or to be fair, many of these conversations may be happening between the children and their counselors, and not filtering their way down to the parents. I know my child does tell me a lot. So, but that is real, I think that it's going to go a long way and a huge step towards clearing up a lot of the confusion amongst us, because it is big decisions, so that's great to hear.
And I think our course catalog is really good, too, because it shows the different pathways, you know, and there's not just one path for math, there's many paths for math. There's not just one for social studies, there's many. So, you know, just making the parents even aware of that and taking a look. And there's even, I think, inside those course catalogs, we still have the planning sheets, too, where they're, they're on the website if they're not in that course catalog.
We're actually doing some revision on that as well, so that it is a little bit clearer, some feedback that we've gotten from students. It isn't very easy to follow, so we're doing some work over the summer to try to roll out kind of a new, an improved, that's a little bit clearer for students on what pathways exist, how to access those pathways. So the conversations are advancing. The foundations funded a program called Transio that will help us to communicate with students, teachers, and parents about these pathways through a product called Journey. So there are a number of things that we're working on to try and help this become more transparent for students, parents, and teachers as well. So trying to get more, more involvement from all stakeholders in that student's life. So some good things coming.
Thanks, Steve.
You know, this is all great, too. I guess one bit of feedback that I received that I wanted to share also, you know, and maybe just if you could help me understand a little bit more, the dual credit program, is that on or off campus at the high school?
Both.
Is it both? Okay. And the reason I'm clarifying is because I've gotten feedback from certain parents that they're not in favor of having their students leave campus to, you know, to take part in these dual credit programs. They understand the value of it, at the same time, they do see the value in them being on campus, being able to socialize with their classmates. And so, you know, perhaps, you know, the argument is that it's a cost savings for us because we have limited need, too. I mean, because I have heard in certain instances that there's been limited enrollment in some of these courses, and therefore it's, you know, probably more economical to share in the expense of camp, with off-campus resources. But I guess I thought I'd share that bit of feedback. And then the second thing that I'd want to mention, too, or I guess ask, is how do you envision the output to be if you're going to do a look back as far as, you know, what's been offered in the past? Because if, and my suggestion is, if in the Y-axis, we could have a listing of all possible honors courses, and the X-axis, we have years, and then within just little squares, basically, that are colored in. So if that's offered in that particular year, that class in that particular year, it's colored in. If it's not, it's left blank. And for those, and for those squares that are left blank in that matrix, you do have some sort of, you know, asterisk, or some sort of description of what class or classes have been established to, you know, replace those honors courses that are no longer offered. Is that something that we can do to make it very easy and accessible for parents versus just putting up a, you know, list of classes on an annual basis, having then possibly scroll through many, many years of catalog?
I think we can support the rationale for some of the decisions that have been made in the past.
Sure. But I'm, what I'm saying is, is there, is there like a...
The format, I think, is secondary from, you know, the explanation of why. And so that's something that we would need to do, and I, just to piggyback onto your dual credit comments, the foundation and the district in general have been really supportive about developing dual credit programs within the school, so that we don't have to go off campus. So for those few instances where students do have to go off campus, you know, it just is the reality that we deal with. But we are trying to bring as many of those programs onto campus as we can, if there's student interest that goes along with it, so.
Great. And that's part of, that's, I think that has to be part of a broader conversation of what we're trying to achieve. I mean, it's the right time to have the conversation, for sure. But there comes, there come costs associated with things like this, right? There's teacher certification that has to be reached, and do we, you know, do we provide that for? So they can, they're actually, they can, there's tuition dollars that allow, where the students do get a college program. And, you know, that's, I think that's part of a broader conversation of where do we want to go moving forward.
We currently have double the dual credit opportunities available to students on our campus as opposed to off-campus. And if a student only took dual credit courses on Barrington High School's campus, and we did present this to you at the April meeting, students could earn up to 37 college credits on our campus, which is a huge celebration.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you for that reminder.
I have a comment when you guys have a moment. It's hard to hear offline, and I apologize, I'm phoning in.
Go ahead, Leah.
Okay. Thanks for letting me phone in. I don't feel well, I appreciate being a part of this. As a person who's had three kids, go through the district, the honors classes is an important piece of this. You know, honors, AP global studies, and honors physics are classes that many, many students take. You know, many students take global studies, and many students take biology, chemistry, and physics. So just to think about this, is that a lot of students as a freshman coming in might not want to take an AP class. And global studies, honors is an option less than that. And also physics, maybe students don't want to take an AP science class, but they want honors. And I understand if the, it was the same content as both of them, it might be interesting to look at it and make it a, you know, three different levels of options of what's, what's available, you know? But if we don't do that, we just need to explain it to people and make it really clear that this is, you know, what's available, and this is what the class is, so students and parents know what the content is and the experience level is, so that they know what it is, and can sign up for the appropriate thing. So I know that, you know, me as a parent, I didn't want my freshmen to take an AP class. I thought that was pretty intimidating, coming into a new school, big high school with a lot of things. But every student is different, at least every family is different, so we just need to explain what it is and what the options are. So that's my input for this conversation, and I appreciate what we're doing, and that's what I'm offering to the board and to the community. So thank you.
Thanks, Leah.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I reiterate what Katie has said, I think maybe the problem is communication. I think the parents don't understand what we're doing with our course selection. I think if we could generalize, not all AP classes are the same, not all AP classes are as rigorous, some of them are much more rigorous than others. And I guess we shouldn't get scared off by the term AP. It just means we're going to work your child a little bit harder. But I think we have to communicate to parents that we're not getting them into a, like a sinkhole where they're, we're setting their kids up to fail because they're in an AP class. That, you know, that, that, yes, they're going to have to work, but we want to challenge all the kids. So I think the key is communication, as Katie has said, and maybe the parents aren't part of the loop as much as they need to be, because we want to let the kids make their decisions, but I think they need their parents to counsel them. They may not understand exactly what AP global studies means, as Leah said. And I just don't want the parents to get scared off by the term AP, because that doesn't necessarily connote, you know, five hours of homework every night, and...
Right. Right. Thanks, Barry. I was, couldn't put it to words, but I think it's also good to look at, if the rigor's there, they, let's make sure the students are getting their credit. They're doing the work, let's make sure they get their credit for the AP as well. So, thank you. Thank you for listening and, and all the work that you're doing at the high school to provide the excellent offerings that we do have. Any other questions on that? I got to remember where we were. We're not done with your report, right?
So officially, we interrupted you, sorry.
I'm not sure about that.
I think we've had honors.
Okay, you win. I'll be quick with the last, last two items. As the board noted, we reported an update on frame number 220. Done a lot of work preparing draft of learner profile, strategic priorities. We have pushed those out to everyone that was involved in the learner profile group, as well as those that attended the strategic planning summit, so we've gotten some feedback that way. But we also want to take this out into the community and provide opportunities for our constituents to offer some additional feedback. So as Sandra had mentioned earlier, love for the board to attend. We'll get you a signup sheet, hopefully you can plug in. I had the first group last night, I don't know, about 12, 13 people, real good conversation, really, you know, insightful feedback. People had prepared, they read it in advance, so really enjoying the interaction and the engagement. And this is one I'm happy I can share. We'll have different members of the exec council that will be out, because I can't be in all of these places at one time. So really looking forward to the feedback, and we'll continue to update the board. And we'd just appreciate any help with your constituent groups. Sharing these dates, encouraging people to go. The broader the net that we cast, the more this plan is going to be reflective of the expectations of the community. Just want to thank board members that were able to attend. We had a wonderful day traveling around to five different sites. I heard it was a world record for Pepper construction, the most kickoff ceremonies in one day. It's certainly an exciting time for our school district as all of these projects begin to move forward. And certainly thank the board for making the time to kind of launch this off. And now the real work begins over the summer with, with all of these projects. So great day for our board, our administration to showcase some of the things we're doing, but also a great day for the community to start to realize their support of that referendum is coming to fruition as we kind of, you know, renovate and improve our facilities throughout the district.
And the weather held out.
The weather, yes.
And last but not least in my report, I would like to introduce to you later in your report, it will be recommended that Dr. Peg Lozwicki, I knew I was going to do it, will be, is being recommended to join... to do it, will be, is being recommended to join Barrington 220 as the new Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. Peg is currently the Assistant Superintendent at Arlington Heights, District 25, and has served in that capacity for the past three years. I, you know, we, in checking references and talking to different people, I thought this comment resonated and will resonate with the board. Peg is a 100% student-centered and 100% service-oriented. She cares deeply about supporting staff so that they can provide the best learning environment for every single student. She has the unique but genuine ability to help all members of the team appreciate each, each other and work collaboratively for the benefit of students. She's a trusted and valued member by staff and by families. I've seen numerous situations that have been resolved successfully due to her ability to connect with families and staff around a common goal. She never loses sight of what's important, and that's students. And I, that, that comment resonated in everyone that I've spoken to regarding your work. I have, I think, I've had the opportunity two days in a row to be at luncheons with superintendents, and word is starting to get out. And they are just amazed she's coming here, and nothing but positive things for all the work that she's done. So, you can hold your breath for a few more minutes, but hopefully very soon you'll be approved by the board. And I know we'll give you an opportunity to say a few things to the board at that time. That would conclude my report.
Excellent. Thank you.
Can I just say that I know that your, our COVID stats are no longer a weekly part of your report. I trust that you're monitoring our schools for surges to get us through the last two weeks of school. But I just wanted to celebrate this being the first year in three years that our kids have been able to attend the entire year in person for, yeah, just the duration of the school year. And I know we learned a lot of things through remote learning as well that we'll carry with us. But just wanted to thank you and thank our exec council and the staff and the teachers, because navigating a global pandemic, and I know we're still in it, but I know it was not part of your job description. And for me, as a parent and as a school board member, just very, very grateful that our kids were able to, to attend in person throughout the district this year. So thank you for all the work that you put in.
Good reminder.
Yeah. So, let's celebrate that.
Actually, too, before we move on, Katie, I just wanted to make sure, are you good with the answers that were provided today? Or do you still want to see something more specific as it relates to honors courses and historical, you know, ins and outs of that catalog?
I think they're going to address it, yeah.
And how, and, and we, I'm sorry if I missed it. Did we decide how we're going to address it? Are we just going to publish catalogs from the previous five years? Is that what I heard? No, what are your, how is it going to be presented?
What I heard was we provided a rationale for changes that have been made.
Are we going to be able to see specifically what changes have been made? And is it, how far back are we going?
I, I guess that's a work decision with where we're at in the school year. I'd like to limit it, and hopefully we can push this information to, we got this little thing called graduation on June 3rd. So I know the high school's pretty busy with that.
Sure.
So, maybe we can circle back with you on how to share that information.
Yeah. No, to make an action, you guys, we're going to address it and get back to us.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, we don't have any information reports this week. Just triple checking. So let's go to board committee reports. Any updates from any committees?
So, District Equity Team, we met for the last time this year. I know you're going to hear a lot more from Nate Rouse. And this time, we went to Roslin. So I personally want to thank the staff and Principal Kirk at Roslin, because I went from, for hosting for this District Equity Team Committee, but I went from only being very familiar with the amazing playground that the Roslin PTO helped build with the district and, and our construction partners, to, to going inside the building three times in one week. And it was great to hang out with, I know all of us board members have picked schools that we're not as familiar with, and that those tours are ongoing. And it was great to hang out with the dual-language classes during STEM, and hang out with kindergarteners during their snack time, and, and learn more about Roslin. So, thank you to Principal Kirk and the staff for that. But with regard to District Equity Team, it's, it has been just so great to meet in person. We've been touring. Just a reminder that it's an invitational space, and over the last two years, really built a lot of trust among each other. It's a cross-section of our teachers, our staff, board members, community members, parents, and a student, Abigail, who's back there. And it was, it's, it's been a wonderful space to do self-reflection, but also to think about how do we move forward with regard to equity and common language and integrating the stories and backgrounds of our incredibly multiracial district with students with different neurodivergent, different abilities, and different socioeconomic backgrounds. And it's been, it's been a wonderful space. We reflected on, we've been going through journal together, and we reflected on our experiences with race. And I, and Nate will present some more to you later on. But it, it was also a great time to thank Abigail, who's moving on to Duke, two departing members, and Dr. Armanderos Maxwell, Principal at Sunny Hill, who's retiring this year. So it was great to be able to thank them as well. And for those parents in the community, I know there's some interest in our equity efforts and District Equity Team, but please feel free, if you're interested, to, to reach out to Nate, who I'm, I'm sure will provide his contact info later, because we, we do want you to get involved in different levels. And Leah, who's a part of that team, do you want to add anything to our meetings this year as a whole?
You are doing a great job, and I feel bad that I'm not live in person. But yes, it's been a very good team. And there's been some sub, subcommittees going on. And I'm sure Nate is going to update the community in his update. So, thank you so much to all of our members and all of the teachers and staff that are working on this in the different buildings and the, the communities that are being built across the district. I super appreciate you, and so does the rest of the families and the students in our district to keep this work moving forward, because it's super important. And I see it, like, moving forward with our, you know, strategic plan, our Framework 220 in the future. So thank you so much, everybody. And I appreciate Dr. Hunt in supporting this work so much. Thanks.
All right. We'll hear more about that in a few minutes. Any other committee reports?
Safety and Security, Matt. We got to say hello to our new SRO.
Ah, excellent.
We have new blue reflective leonards for members of the Safety and Security Team to kind of differentiate them when walking the halls from staff, subs, students, all that. So there's, you know, different color coding. It's, they're easily recognizable. They put forward the, the draft schedule for the Run, Hide, Fight presentations that are going to go out to all the schools starting next year. We talked about bringing back the fire prevention and safety curriculum across all elementary schools and incorporating visits to the fire stations again. And there was some excitement regarding that. And then also talked about just reaching out to our emergency departments to let them know that with, you know, prom obviously just happened, and some other activities are happening at the high school, there will be some kids that are getting home after curfew, just to put that alert out there into the community so that they know that there will be some, some kids getting home a little later than normal. That was it.
Awesome.
Also, one more. It's still May, so happy Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month again, and happy early Pride Month for June. And one reminder, there's, we have a cultural calendar up that I'm sure Nate will talk about, and that has more resources about both these months and for the rest of the year as well. So, check that out on our Equity page.
All right. Thank you. All right. Shall we move on to the consent agenda?
Oh, wait. Can I just give a quick, the 220 Foundation, I'm, I'm hoping I can go, because I haven't been able to. It's pitch night tomorrow at the high school for the incubator program. So, 5:00 PM, it starts at 5:00 PM, and then pitches will start at 6:00 PM, which I think should be pretty cool.
Yes. Is there money awarded for that?
Yes, there is. So it's the top four get to present, right?
Correct.
Yep.
All right. Now, are we ready to move the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? And I'll read through everything that's in there. You have to give a motion?
Second.
Okay. So, we have gifts, gifts from Joyce Moynihan and Joyce Wright from the National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution, over 630 books for the summer read for students. So that's very exciting. Thank you very much for that, Joyce and Joyce. We also have April reports for 2021 exception bills, activity accounts for BHS and K through eight, wage and payroll report, treasurer's report, and revenues and expenditures. Those are the April reports. And then we have May reports for the bill list and NSLP bill list. We also have minutes from May 3rd, both open and closed. And I should have said this first to remind everyone, ready to look. But we do have a revised personnel report, so make sure you take a look at that. And then, as we spoke about at our last meeting, we have the consolidated district plan. We'll also be approving on that consent agenda. Any questions? Okay, let's do a roll call.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Leah Colister Lozari.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. So with that motion passing, Dr. Lozwicki?
I'd like to thank the Board of Education and Dr. Hunt for giving me the opportunity to be part of the District 220 team. I'm very excited to get started and continue the excellent work that District 220 is known for. I'm looking forward to the continued success of working with the families and staff and sharing my passion for special education. I'm honored to be here, so thank you very much. And Dr. Hunt, thank you for your kind words. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome.
All right. Let's move on to our action items. Do we have a motion to approve the lunch and breakfast menu price, prices as presented?
Second.
All right. Any questions of what was presented? Any summary you want us to make a statement before we?
We discussed this in finance, and I think we are obligated to, and that's the recommendation that we're making going forward.
Either that or we have to make adjustments elsewhere in the budget, so. Yeah, I think Leah talked about this too in her summary report from last meeting. Okay. Are we ready for a roll call? Let's do it.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Leah Colister Lozari.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Did we say the numbers? So, the breakfast price will go to $150, and the new price for lunch is $3.05, $3.05. Did I get that right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so next up is the consideration to approve the retirement agreement and general release. We have a motion?
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Just like to recognize and thank Beth Jones for her service to the district. She is one that cares deeply about kids and families, and certainly made an impact on a lot of people. So wanted to recognize and thank her for her time. Wish her well with her retirement.
Absolutely. Thank you, Beth. All right. Shall we do a roll call?
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Leah Colister Lozari.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. Next, we have a motion to approve a one-time performance-based payment to Dr. Hunt in the amount of $15,000.
Moved.
Second.
Okay, so the Board of Education took some time to think about and reflect upon this year that we've talked about a little bit. And the motion that we will vote on here is to, as it was stated, is a one-time performance recognition to Dr. Hunt for all the work that he's done in his first year here in this, in hopefully the last year of our pandemic. But thank you very much for being here and all the work that you've done and the leadership you've given to, to the staff in the district.
I appreciate that. I'm certainly lucky to have such a great team. So, thank you for your, your leadership as a board as well.
You're very welcome. So again, it's a one, it's a one-time, and it does not change the contract that we do have in place. Okay.
And it's also very similar to a CPI increase that we granted, in line with, in addition to the, to the hours you put in, that we granted to a lot of, the rest of the administrative staff as well.
That's correct. All right. Roll call.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Leah Colister Lozari.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Hunt. Let's go into our discussion items. First up is, I'm not sure who else is coming forward.
Dr. Fuller, Dr. Byrne.
Okay, we're going to talk about pandemic lessons.
So, just as a, kind of an intro, we, we talked a lot about dealing with the pandemic and getting through the pandemic. But we also talked a lot about, this is completely kind of flipped education on its tail. And there, in any kind of crisis, there's opportunity. And it was, as we wrestled with how to best capture the things that we should consider to hold on to, as an executive council, we made the decision that we needed to go out and talk to our teachers and get feedback from our teachers. So, executive council members went to every building in the district and went through a protocol, asking questions specific to lessons learned during the pandemic. And I think what, I think the board is accustomed to. We don't just kind of gather information and then just put it on a shelf. The teams worked really hard on analyzing that data, developing themes, and presenting in a way that it can be useful and meaningful as we move forward with making decisions about the future of our schools. Last thing I'll say, and then I'll, I'll turn it over. It really validated a lot of the conversations and input that we've received during focus groups, and we saw on our community input forums in terms of the pandemic and moving forward. So, certainly appreciate all of exec council was involved in gathering this, and, and Dr. Byrne and Dr. Fuller in terms of kind of bringing this together for the board tonight.
Dr. Hunt. As Dr. Hunt stated, we each, exec council members each went to one or more schools and engaged with their staff, and specifically asked these three guiding questions. The first, what have you learned throughout the pandemic about what education and school could be? How have relationships changed between you and your students and their families? And finally, what programs or services developed out of necessity during the pandemic that you'd like to see continued? And even though those are three targeted questions, you will find through our results that many, many more themes came out of those questions. And we found it fascinating what our, our staff came up with. As Dr. Hunt indicated, all 12 schools are represented in our responses. And when we shelled out, we ended up having just over 1,500 responses from all of the schools that we went through individually and coded, and collected this data between January and April of this year. There were five primary themes that came out, and Melissa and I will go through these themes right now. The top five themes were technology, flexibility and adaptability, relationships, SEL, and finally, homeschool connections. And then there were seven secondary themes that came out as well. The first theme, technology, was mentioned, even though it was not a primary question we asked, it was mentioned in over 23% of the, of the responses. And the, the top two technology-related responses were, number one, the staff was interested in continuing virtual parent meetings as an option after the pandemic through Zoom or some other, or some other platform. They were not interested in, in replacing them completely. They were interested in having them remain an option. And likewise, with virtual staff meetings with both district- with both district meetings and school-based meetings, keeping Zoom as an option after the pandemic. In addition, staff respondents were interested in keeping remote learning days for emergency days as options among the responses. And a smaller number were interested in having remote learning programs stay, the remote learning stay as a program after the pandemic as a student choice program. As we were coding the results in technology, it was clear that some results were more, some results were positive on technology, some results were negative on technology. So, we decided to code that too. We discovered that among all those 1,500 responses, we had, of the technology responses, 71% were positive comments about technology. Only 24% were negative comments. And there were some middle comments too. I believe the term "double-edged sword" came up a lot, more than once. And then, we found it interesting to check out, how does this break down among the grade levels? And perhaps, not surprisingly, the elementary teachers found that they had a more positive view of technology than the 6th through 12 teachers. And we probably think that had a lot to do with cameras during, cameras on during class, because we had a lot of those types of comments come up in the breakdown.
Just difficulty in getting students to be on camera?
Also gave them the choice as well. But it led to, it led to a lot of different opinions, we'll say. As far as flexibility and adaptability, these two, this topic came up about 14% of the time among all of the responses. And this was a great comment, because it encapsulated so many of the teachers who mentioned they were surprised that they realized that learning really can happen anywhere. And this response has a lot of meat to it, and there are a lot of, a lot of different topics in there that were expressed throughout the comments. In addition, in flexibility and adaptability, a lot of teachers talked about what I call the ideals of blended learning. You may remember that our definition in the district of blended learning is learning that's partially online, partially face-to-face, where students have some control over time, place, path, and pace. And that came up many times in flexibility and adaptability, those specific terms in fact. And finally, the terms resiliency and creativity came up a lot during the flexibility and adaptability section.
The next primary theme is relationships, which was about 13% of the overall responses. So, overall, staff felt that their relationships strengthened with students, other staff members, as well as families. So, if we break that down from a pre-K5 lens and a secondary lens, you'll see that it was an overwhelming positive response in that they felt that their relationships became much deeper as a result of... And then, in regards to the breakdown of staff to student, staff to staff, and staff to family, you can see that the majority of staff were referencing the staff-to-student relationships. Because if you think about it, staff really got an opportunity to not only getting to know students on an academic level, but got to know them on a personal level as well, to really understand and know what each child and family was going through. I think this might be the most powerful quote that came out of our data. "Education in schools are about relationships, which lead to learning and growth." That's really what it's all about, is knowing each other as who we are as humans. And then, making connections, and those being as important, if not more important in some cases, than academic content. Another primary theme, which is also not surprising, because we've talked a lot about it this year, is social-emotional learning, which was about 9% of overall responses. And the comments here were about the increased emphasis on SEL. And then, a lot of staff members talked about the need for more social interaction during the school day, now that we are back in person and talking to students more about what it means to communicate with one another, collaborate with one another in an in-person school setting. And then, the continued need for us to look at as a district, what we're doing in terms of SEL in regards to staff and interventions. And then, our last primary theme was that homeschool connection, which was about 8% of overall responses. So, staff, as I talked a little bit about before, has gained a deeper understanding of the home lives of students. They really got to know them on a deeper level. And then, overall, the changes in parent and family engagement, staff felt that that really increased during the pandemic because of the time that they were spending with students and families in both modality as well. It's easier in some cases to connect with families virtually, because you're not having to travel anywhere. And then, in addition to our primary themes, we did have some secondary themes that we did feel important to talk about. So, these were any themes that were anywhere from 1% to 5% of the overall responses. So, in-person learning, meaning that in-person learning is still the preferred method of learning over virtual. Communication, always the point that more communication is needed with students and families. Interventions, to continue to focus on both the academic interventions as well as the social-emotional interventions. Blended learning strategies, this was talked about a lot in the written comments, and utilizing the blended learning strategies, specifically at the high school that we've had in place for many years, but continuing to capitalize on those as well. And then, trust came out as a secondary theme. And staff members reported that there is a high level, higher level of trust as a result of the pandemic than was there previously. And then, personalized learning. We opened up a window and a door to what this could look like for students, and getting them what they need, when they need it, and the way that they need it. And then, more opportunities for staff collaboration. So, now, in terms of next steps, we're bringing this data to you today. And then, our exec council members will be sharing this data report and presentation with each building to, in a synthesized way, so the staff know what the themes were from all of our buildings. And then, we also presented this with our ELTS-LT group last week, and are supporting the buildings and incorporating this into their school improvement or vision cycling process. So, any questions or feedback from the board?
I think this is awesome. I'm so glad you guys did this, because, you know, it's so important to learn from, you know, this crazy, unanticipated event. And I just, you know, I have one comment, and then I also, I want to start though with just a praise, which is, you know, I can remember, I don't know how many years ago it was, and I think it was Dr. Fuller, but maybe it was someone else that was with you, but you were explaining to us, who were sitting like doe-eyed, what blended learning meant. And they were like, there was like, a picture of a student, then there'd be little boxes, like, they may spend some time in school, and they may learn the content in school and go home and do their homework. Or, they may learn the content at home and come to school and do their homework. And we were like, what does that mean? We were asking so many questions, and it seemed so, you know, out of the box, and, you know, anything that's different. I think you always kind of, at least I try to kind of tap the brakes, like, wait, is this the right direction? Is this what we should be doing? And then, you know, we all got on board, and it became so much more natural. And then, you know, obviously, in-person learning is preferred, and you know, that's your assessment as well. But it was really, I think, just, it made me proud to think that we were already forward-thinking about this situation before it happened, without knowing that this was going to happen. So, I just really want to commend you for that. I thought it was, you know, it started out where we were kind of patting ourselves on our backs, because we had asked for that, you know, the ability to do snow days as remote learning days. And we thought it would just be, you know, a couple weeks that we would have to do this, and we were ahead of the curve. But look, what happened. So, that was number one. And then, number two was something that I brought up maybe the last meeting, maybe two meetings ago. But I just, I think I mentioned, when I was sitting at a table during the learner profile with a teacher, who made such an interesting comment. And I just hope that we can, I don't know what to do with this comment, but it resonated with me so well, that I think that it's something we have to take forward, which was just that the pandemic showed us that children, you know, while we have been working towards collaborative learning, we also had situations where kids had to learn how to work completely independently. And this really highlighted or spotlighted, you know, maybe some of the, you know, the areas that we need to work on, to allow for both of those things. Because it's not necessarily that we're going to work in a society, or kids are going to, you know, grow up and work in a society where everything is collaborative. Sometimes you do have to be an independent worker, and sometimes you have to be, you know, inventive and creative, and, you know, problem-solving and all that, all by yourself. And, you know, this pandemic definitely highlighted that, because a lot of kids were working in their bedrooms by themselves. So, I just wanted to throw that out there as one observation that I just thought was so smart that a teacher said, and I was like, okay. I hope we can, I don't know what we do with that, but I just found it very thoughtful.
And I think, too, it speaks to the importance of the learner profile. And once we solidify what those personal success skills are, how do we scaffold those down and up? And what do those look like in different contexts? So, what does that look like when a student's working independently versus with a group and being able to support a student in both contexts?
We never intended these results to dovetail so well with what we learned in the summit and the learner profile work, but they definitely have. So, thanks for pointing that out. And thank you for remembering those animations. Those are just forever to do. Thank you.
Well worth it, well worth it. Great example. It reminded me of one of the quotes I was looking at last week, or last board meeting, that 90% of education is encouragement. Right? And I, and I, as a French gentleman, I can't remember his name. It's come to my head, I just wrote it down here. But, and that, I think, coincides with what you presented as well, with those relationships and the SEL, and how important that truly is. And I'm looking forward to seeing how we can continue and strengthen that as we continue with education. I mean, I think there are some wonderful opportunities here that we maybe wouldn't have seen. And I love thinking about the silver linings. I think even, Dr. Hunt, when we spoke to you before you even came here, we talked about, you know, looking for what can we learn from this pandemic, and what can we do better going forward? So, I'm really proud of all the work that you've done, and I'm proud of everybody's feedback here. It's an amazing volume of feedback. And I'm really looking forward to seeing how we can do better.
So, I smile, oh, go ahead. Did you hear that?
No.
Okay.
The only thing I would just echo is, you know, a lot of people kind of got on that bandwagon of saying, "We've got to learn from this." But I don't know of any other district that took the time to commit to talking to our staff, breaking that information down, and pulling it together in a way that we can hand it off and put it in front of the people in the buildings that they're... Think about, how does this play into what we do next? And it's really powerful work that, you know, it's a great little package and a presentation, but it's messy and it's ugly, and it's a lot of time and effort. So, I think it's going to serve the district well moving forward.
Really proud of this work.
I was just going to say, I smiled when you said that there seemed to be a desire to continue some of the parent-teacher conferences virtual, because, so, my husband and I experienced both, where in the fall, we were at station, and we got to meet our teachers in person, or our teachers, our son's teachers in person. And in the spring, we did the virtual meetings. And one thing I really appreciated about the virtual meetings, even though I love the physical, is that we were on time to all of them. And it wasn't just, it wasn't just because of me and my bad habits that we were late at station. It was that we were, as much as we loved the building, we were getting lost, we couldn't find like the different, where the rooms were, the different hallways. We were just spending time getting oriented. So, I appreciated being to fit like eight meetings in our 15-minute time frame, it seemed. It seemed very efficient without losing some of the intimacy and the one-on-one conversation we were able to get with our teachers. So, I guess my question is, I think that's something that jumps out as a tangible thing that maybe we might keep going. Is there anything else that kind of comes to mind at this kind of early stages of processing feedback? It's like, oh, these are things that, you know, we may want to, that you kind of can see incorporating as we move forward?
Lots of things. I think specifically what's coming to mind now is the flexibility and adaptability, as well as the opportunity to really personalize learning for students, and making that shift to, from differentiated instruction to true personalized learning, and encouraging students to own the learning, I think will be really powerful. And that now, we know for sure that learning doesn't have to be confined by time or space. And there is a lot we can do there to really reimagine how we're supporting all of our learners.
Likewise, with blended learning, where the high school teachers were able to use the terms, because many of them had experienced them, but we got some of the same feedback with middle and elementary. And we had started going down that road to expand blended down to the elementary, middle and elementary grade levels. We're completely ready for it now, because everyone experienced some level for it. So, it's, this is an opportunity that cannot be wasted.
I'm guessing we've also lost any kind of true snow day now, right? We'll probably be remote.
It's two decisions. It's two decisions, right? Do we need a snow day?
We appreciate you guys being here tonight.
I would just echo Dr. Hunt and Sandra. I mean, I think we all know I could make my list of negatives from remote learning. I'm sure I set up ad nauseam. But this is so, I think, like you said, the silver lining. I mean, it is, we did learn something, and this is, we? You? Teacher learned something, and it's so great to bring it forward and benefit in ways from where we were. So, awesome, thank you.
I struggled with the pandemic and learning at home and being alone, but there was a good number of kids that thrived during that time. And so, I applaud you, and I want to capture that and make sure those kids that thrive still have the opportunity to continue to thrive, because maybe they don't belong in a standard classroom, or they need the opportunities to kind of get outside the box like we did during COVID. So, you know, and, you know, the old saying, you know, "When life gives you lemons, make lemonade." I mean, you guys made a very sweet program here, and I'm just very impressed. And I hope we can follow through on some of the improvement process using what we've learned. So, you know, I applaud all your hard work.
Hey, thank you. I don't mean to cut off, Barry.
You didn't.
Okay, okay. Yeah, thank you for all this work. I appreciate it too. And just a quick question, is this, I know there's been a lot of work on the SEL dashboard. I think that's the right term. Are we still working with that and building on that? Is my small question here? Because that was a lot of work from the past few years, and this is, you know, continuing. So, that's it.
Yes, thank you. We are in the process of administering Yes, thank you. We are in the process of administering the spring SEL survey through ECRIS, if that's part of what you're referring to.
I think it is.
Yeah. That window is currently open.
Awesome. All right. Well, thank you again.
Thank you so much.
And thanks to all the staff for all this incredible feedback.
Keep the momentum going.
Yeah, keep the momentum going.
Keep it going.
Relationships are so impactful.
Too rich to let it end here, for sure.
All right. So next up is our equity update.
I do know. They're your fan club. We're all for you. So this is report four for me, and I believe the first time that I'm actually seeing all of you and we don't have masks on. So I know that's a reoccurring theme, but hello. Good to see you all. Um, thank you so much for the opportunity. Um, I promise I will be as succinct as possible. Um, I do have some updates for you, but I think the most important pieces are the, the folks in the back of the room that want to share some of the experiences that they've had with their work.
That's awesome. So I really wanted to give them a chance to be able to take any
time to come. But, uh, this is kind of a compliment, a compilation of just checking back in as to some of the work that we talked about, we were going to be doing in the fall, and then giving you some updates on that, but then really talking a little bit about some of the lived experiences that are happening in the building and then talking about some of the stuff on the horizon. So, um, with that being said, okay, we're going, good, good, good. Uh, just as, uh, you know, to kind of give you an overview, talk a little bit about Leading for Equity. This is just a little follow-up about some of the work that the administration has done this year, as we've kind of done some professional development together. So I wanted to give you a little highlight on that. Um, a wonderful blessing from the Illinois State Board of Education, which is called the Equity Journey Continuum. Uh, you may remember some scuttlebutt about that sometime in February or January from, from Dr. Hunt mentioning to you that the, the Illinois State Board of Education has given us a wonderful opportunity to excel as it relates to an Equity Journey Continuum. I'll talk briefly about that. Um, the Equity in Action is all of the folks behind me talking a little bit about the great work that's happening in the district. I'll give you a little bit of a hint of some things that are happening on the horizon and then last and certainly not least, allow you some opportunity for questions. Okay? So with that in mind, um, I know that Sandra had always, had already spoken about this, but just I always start with that commitment to equity because that's one of the things that is the driver for my work. I know that you all know that since you wrote it, so I won't have to read that to you. But, uh, this is again, as a reminder to the community as to why and the direction of the work that I, I particularly do. Um, Leading for Equity, one of the things I talked about earlier in the year was meeting with Dr. Hunt, Dr. Winkelman with some questions about what sort of professional development that our administration has had relative to, to equity, uh, race and cultural diversity. Uh, we hadn't had much at the time, so we kind of brainstormed behind the scenes. And you remember in, I think in, in the fall, I talked about our first administrative academy together. We're all 60 of our administrators were together, uh, had some wonderful professional development. And then what I did for the rest of the year is just sustain that effort through meetings with them. And our goals were to, again, get to know each other, establish positive and meaningful relationships. And then again, delve into a deeper understanding of what equity, race and cultural diversity looks like and what it looks like to lead in that work. And so we spent some time together, about three hours. Uh, we split the time, 60, you know, there's 60 of us that we did, uh, you know, half hour, three-hour sessions in the morning, three-hour sessions in the afternoon, so that our, our buildings could still run and then we could still have the opportunity to develop our work together. And so we used that model for the remainder of the year. Um, in the red is there's something, it's a manual called Culture Proficiency and Manual for School Leaders. Uh, that's some of the anchor work, uh, for the work that we do. So I wanted to make sure I shared that. And then behind that is something called the Culturally Proficient Continuum Framework, which really is the meat and potatoes, if you will, of the work. Uh, one of the things that I did for our administrative staff is, uh, well, two things. First, um, I, I worked with this with our district equity team and I'll have to be honest, um, Steve Williams, who works in our, in the copy center, um, I had sent him a document for, for, for folks and I wanted the administration to have. And so annoying to me, what he did was he was kind enough to blow it up into a sheet that looks like a placemat. So all of our leaders got this, this document that you see here and it's a framework. And it's really cool because they can really use this. And what it is, is it's just a way to measure, um, your growth as it relates to equity or proficiency. And so there is destructiveness, which is obviously a space where you maybe do not see equity at all, and actually you don't see equity and actually you try to, um, do things to move away from equity versus the far right, which is proficiency, which is in green, which is where we want to be, where we see the difference, respond positively and affirmingly. And so it's a continuum because different, dependent upon what happens or whatever, whatever you're working on, depending upon the pushback or depending upon where you're sitting, you may ebb and flow relative to the framework. I think it's important for us to though, as leaders, to know individually and collectively where we are in the framework and then use that to really push ourselves more into the proficiency. And so you'll hear a little bit more about this framework in particular from one of our administrators who's going to talk a little bit about how we use that as, as a growth tool for us together. You'll hear that in a little bit in a minute. Um, another big piece is just going from, if you think about our work, is there's a, just a mentality and a philosophy from going from being a reactive administration to a proactive administration as it relates to equity. And what that means is instead of thinking about it from a philosophy of tolerance or mandated equity, and again, you look at the small little arrows there, you've got the destructiveness, incapacity and blindness. I showed you those on that framework at the beginning. So as, as, as you learn and grow in equity, you want to go from a reactive framework to something that's more proactive. And that means that we start focusing on us and our practices versus focusing on them and, and equity being a problem. Uh, diversity and inclusion can be goals that we can obtain. And so we want to do everything to get more further on the right of this column versus the left. And so again, two big components from the leadership that we really looked at to anchor the work that we did together. Another, another way to look at it is thinking about, uh, leadership from expanding our leadership model and mindset to be less traditional and more of a, an equity leadership approach. And what I mean by that is that there are times and places where we should be traditional. There are things that administratively, from just an admin one-on-one perspective, when something happens, we know that there's a, there's a problem that we can fix and there's a way that we do that and, and we use that. What this is challenging us to think about though, is when complex problems come across. And so a complex problem is something that's usually dealing with equity, race and diversity. And what you want to do is kind of flip the model a little bit and really seek information first before you move. And what that simply is, is another way to say, let's talk to the individuals that are most impacted prior to us making decisions. More often than not, in our leadership structures, we, we, we don't find ourselves talking to the people that are most impacted prior to making decisions. This challenges us to, to stop before we start making decisions and really talk, gather feedback from individuals, especially those impacted, prior to us making decisions so that we can make sure that we have a collective way of approaching a problem versus it being more of a, a, something that doesn't involve that feedback. Um, as the Journey Continuum. Uh, again, probably in January 25th, I think is when our, our State Board of Education started talking a little bit about, um, producing this for us. It actually didn't come live for us until probably mid-February. I know that that time, Dr. Hunt said, hey, you know, this Equity Journey Continuum is coming. And again, this is just a polite tease. I promise you in August, we'll get, we'll delve even deeper into this, but just know that this is part of the, the, the process that our state has been doing as they're looking at trying to find ways to hold districts accountable related to their equity experiences. And so the reason for this is that as they looked at, um, why they're focusing on equity is that students from low-income families are, are underrepresented in, in advanced placement and gifted programs, students of color more often suspended, students with individualized educational programs are more chronically absent, English learners score below their peers in math or reading. These are some of the key components where as they were looking at their data as a state and they decided, you know what, we probably have to do something different. So let's, um, ask our districts to focus in a different way on these particular areas. And that's how kind of the, uh, the continuum came to pass. Um, the key components of the continuum are three particular categories where, uh, one is student learning, the other bucket is learning conditions, and the area three is elevating educators. These are the three buckets, ladies and gentlemen, but I will tell you, under those three buckets, there's probably six to seven different profiles that make up that one bucket. Okay? And again, this is just a nice little mean tease for you. We'll get into the devils in the details as we continue to learn more. Um, the, the key in this is this, the state has, has asked us over this summer, prior to October, uh, the fall of, uh, this fall, where our school report cards come out, that is when they anticipate releasing what's called the Equity Journey Continuum categories for us as a school. It's not individual schools, it's one as a district. And so we will get a score, okay? Or, or steps, if you will, in these particular areas. Just to give you another mean tease about that, to, to, to talk about that a little bit more, uh, the progression indicators are large gaps in equity would be something where we would have a one, uh, moderate gaps in equity would be something that would be a two, small gaps in equity would be category three, minimal gaps would be four. Okay? As it relates to the, again, the aggregate of our scores in those three areas that I just talked about, here is where we landed as a district. Okay? The good news is this, um, we want to, we certainly want to be more towards the three and four areas than we do want to be in ones. But, um, again, this is the, the overall numbers. Once we start delving into each of the categories, we will see why in some of the other small other areas, the numbers will be lower than what we see here. But again, this is the compilation of those. All right? And so, um, as we look at student learning, learning conditions and elevating educators, this is kind of where we listed now. And then as an example of an area for growth for us, as we look at this next slide here, we can look at the Kindergarten Individual Development Survey, or KIDS. Uh, they are saying that a, a large gap for us is how we are responding to that. And so as they're looking at our demographics, they're looking at who's responding and who's not. So this gives us an indication right now that we know, one of the things that we're going to have to report out on prior to October, prior to this going live, is what we're going to do as a district to go from that 1.5 category to a two, two or three or two or four. The good news for us is this, because we have already started our Equity Journey, besides what the, what, what the state is requiring, a lot of the professional development that we're talking about developing and the things that we're doing are going to be pieces of our narrative that we provide to the State Board of Education that says, this is the way that we're looking to move from a step one to a step two, or, or from a step 3.1 to a step 3.4. It'll get that specific. And again, we'll talk a little bit more about those numbers and our journey in August. But, uh, in the interim, what'll happen is myself, Melissa and a team, um, this also has the district equity team, to be honest, written all over it, we'll get together to write what's called a narrative. The state is actually giving us time to develop a narrative over the summer before they release this to the public that explains what our number is. And then again, most importantly, what we plan to do to go to the next level. So our work over the summer with this document is digesting it and then talking about a narrative about what we'll be going, doing to go from point A to point B. Okay? So in essence, in the fall, when I see you again in August or September, we'll talk about the journey and then we'll start talking about actually what we're doing as it relates to those individual pieces. We'll actually talk about that. Okay?
That 1.5 is 220's particular score?
Yes.
In that area?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, as a district, not as, as, uh, individual schools. Okay? A little different from the report card. Okay? More to come on this. Equity in Action. Um, this is the, the little part where I'm going to ask a couple of my friends to come up and, and talk a little bit about some of the work that they're doing. Um, you know, we've had different cohorts that have taken place, um, the last two years. The high school in particular has been a little bit ahead of the rest of the organization. And so some of those individuals are in year two of their equity cohorts, which is a, a place where they do what are called equity, uh, action projects. So they take something that is near and dear to their heart and they try to explore that deeper. Right? And so the first person I'd like to bring up is Ms. Barb Spicer, who's going to come up and talk a little bit about, well, you know, I'm not going to say it. I want you to talk a little bit about your project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Barb Spicer. I am the mother of seven children that went to the Barrington School District and grandmother of 19, and seven of whom are in the school district now, in the elementary, in the middle school and in the high school. So that is one of the reasons why this is near and dear to my heart. Um, I love the Barrington School system and I want it to be the best it can be. Um, and I am a listener. And I'm in the position to listen to staff. I'm administrative assistant in the English department for over 12 years. Um, I'm in a position to listen to staff, to listen to students, to listen to my family and to listen to my neighbors. And what I heard repeatedly was, there doesn't seem to be a very diverse staff in our school system. So I became really curious about that. And I thought, well, that will be my project. Why do we not have a more diverse staff? And what can I do to find out how we can change this? So I thought about, I spoke with Nina, I don't know if she's still here. Um, there she is, about my project. And we both decided maybe I could interview the department chairs in the high school and have some questions that I was curious about. So I did. And I'll share with you my findings. Um, I had asked them and I interviewed seven different department chairs, how long they'd been in their position. And it was a total of 58 years for all of them with an average of eight years. So within these eight years, I asked them, how many candidates had they interviewed? They had interviewed approximately 286. So that averaged per each 40. And then I asked them, also asked them, how many people of color diversity have you interviewed? They said 70, a total. So an average of 10. And then I asked them, how many people of color, of different diversity within our school and our staff have you hired? And they said seven, within the eight years. And most of them were in the World Language Department, which would make sense. Um, I asked them, how did you find your applicants? They said, posted on school website, people who had seen the, the posting, Facebook groups, referrals from District 204, referrals from National Lewis, referrals from Northwest Department Chair Association. I asked them, are you satisfied with the pool of applicants you've been interviewing? They said, yes, but it's getting harder. They would like to see more diverse candidates. They said that alumni returning is nice because there are a fair amount of alumni and that's nice, but it would also be nice to have a more diverse hiring pool. Um, they said that late hiring puts them at a disadvantage, that many of them felt that they were doing a lot of their hiring in the 11th hour. And then you weren't really getting the top candidates. They said, and this came out repeatedly, that HR reach out would be helpful. So if human resources could reach out to different applicants in the area, in the city, that that would be helpful. Um, they asked, what, or I asked, what can we do to increase the number of diverse candidates? Some of them said, could we possibly hire a recruiting service to actively recruit more diverse candidates? One of the department chairs, and this was an interesting, um, revelation, that she ends up hiring a lot of her student teachers. And because then they're there, they see that they do a good job and the, the student teachers realize they like being here in, in the Barrington School District and they get hired. And we thought, could that not be a way to get some candidates in here from other schools, from more diverse candidates? It's not as much of a risk. They're coming here, you know, many times, maybe without a family yet. So they're not moving family. Um, and they could see that, yes, they could fit in at Barrington High School. And also on the other hand, we could see, yes, they're doing a wonderful job. They'd be a great candidate for hire, these diverse applicants. Um, they also want to make sure that the language used in our job postings are welcoming to all. And I think that is something they've been working on. Um, I asked them, anything else you would like to share regarding your thoughts on the district's interviewing and hiring process? They said diverse representation here at BHS is important. There needs to be intentional steps to recruiting diverse candidates. We need to establish a pipeline with colleges and universities with a diverse student population for potential student teachers and teacher applicants. Um, they said the video interviews were very helpful because on a application, you cannot ask race or, you know, various other things, religion, and that the video, here they see, yes, they're hiring someone, a diverse applicant. So they, they really appreciate that.
If I could add something. I think one of the, the morals of this is the affirmation of some of the things that we talked about in the fall relative to how we work with HR and, um, try to, um, diversify our pools by using different metrics. And so we've heard from a couple of division heads that talked about kind of our, it's the, the normal standard operations, which is, you know, you go to your, your division chair pool of candidates. Everyone has these candidates, but what we're recognizing is that as it relates to looking for candidates of color, our process might have to look different. The way that we go out and reach out might have to look different. We might have to start going to different places and frankly, where more candidates of color are. So maybe that's connections with, uh, the HSBCUs. One of the things that District 203 does, one of the things that District U46 does, one of the things that District 300 does, is they actually do have a team that does go to different places where there are more minority candidates. And so that could be something that we consider doing. And so this was just an affirmation of some of the very things that we've been talking about. I myself, there's talk to Teresa about it. I know that Teresa's been talking about human resources, about, about how we can really, really aggressively find ways to increase our candidate pool. Again, at the same time, hiring the best candidates. It doesn't mean that you are lowering your standards. It's just saying that as a district, you want to make sure that you have individuals that, um, represent the diversity that you have in your district.
Thank you. Thank you. So my own reflection after gathering this information and thinking about it, I feel that it's a little disturbing that we are willing to seek out and pay architects large amounts of money for design renovations to our buildings in order to keep them up to date and to fill our students' needs. Yet, from what I can see, we have not been spending the time, money or effort needed to hire needed to hire a diverse group of educators to work within these fine buildings and meet the needs of our students. I know that it was mentioned several times while interviewing the department chairs that finding and retaining these diverse candidates is hard. But it's my experience in life that most things that are worthwhile are hard. And in order to keep the excellence in our schools and to walk the walk of promoting equity, which we say we, we want for our school district, we need to proactively recruit applicants from colleges and universities with diverse populations. We need to develop relationships with these schools. I also know that sometimes meaningful change can be slow and gradual. However, I wonder how many more graduating classes we will continue to let go through the Barrington School District without the benefit of experiencing a diverse staff? How many Barrington alumni, when recalling their days at Barrington, will say, I never saw or had a teacher that looked like me? We can and need to do better. Please make this a priority before another year goes by. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb.
Thanks.
Sure. Heidi Rockwell and Ms. Robinson, you wanna come up? Heidi and Jennifer are also in their second year. And for their Equity Action Project, um, in a spirit of using a train-the-trainer model, we have asked them to be part of our professional development team. So their Equity Action Project was working with us to actually develop and lead the facilitation for our, our second cohort this year.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Robinson. I'm assistant principal at the high school. I've been there for fifteen years.
How many?
Fifteen.
I'm Heidi Rockwell, and I teach English and social studies, and I'm, um, I wear many hats, and this is one of them. Um, this is my twenty-fourth year here at Barrington.
We like to call ourselves Equity in Action. We are, when you look at equity, we look at organizational structure, organizational policies. And at the high school right now, we are the주주주. As we've both been here a long time, we've seen different policies come and go. But what we really have learned throughout the pandemic, throughout just our years being here, is that together, we are stronger. And what creates a true diverse and equitable place is a place of belonging. So this year, for year two, we started last year in learning. Cohort year one is professional development, student-centered focus, uh, research-based practices that give us those tools that teach us about equity and diversity. Year two, we are helping to guide, uh, guide different staff members in their projects. And the nice part about that is it's, it's a hard job. There's a lot of courageous conversations that are had, but there's a lot of reflection. And in order to support student-centered, you have to support staff. You have, staff has to see themselves in the students, because that's how they change instruction. That's how they change behavior. That's how they create a sense of belonging in their classrooms. And that's what we're doing. Through different, through different artifacts, through different professional development, we are trying to create a safe space for staff to have those conversations of what their equity journey looks like. And then, we have the staff members go back to their classrooms and look around and really dive into, what does this look like for me? How am I looking at individual students, whether it's based off different cultures, economics, abilities, and race? How am I creating that sense of belonging? Because as we all know, students that don't feel like they belong aren't going to perform as well. So supporting the staff and giving them the tools are helping to create that equity journey with students. We've also created different opportunities in excelling student voice. We've created, just listening to students, we've had student panels, which were attended by our second-year cohort staff, where they heard different students, different genders, uh, different cultures, speak about what Barrington High School looks like to them, what their average day is like. And it was powerful. You could drop a dime on the floor, and everybody just listened. There, there were tears in the room. Because you have to take that moment to stop and say, wow, I never knew this is what your experience was like. And it was so powerful to hear student voice, to hear the students talk about, this is how high school is for me. And, and as you think about it, the fact that we have the chance to do this, I think about when I went to high school, and that, no. We didn't have that ability, but now we do. And it's so nice to just unwrap the staff and create those abilities. We've created different clubs through Student Voice. We were able to create the Black Student Union that celebrates African-American culture, but also invites other different cultures to come in and celebrate. I see you as being an African-American, but I celebrate you for who you are, and I wanna be a part. So we're, and not only are we doing that, but we're creating other opportunities in terms of celebrating Black History Month, in terms of celebrating Women's History Month, in terms of getting different information out there, so everyone feels a part, because together, we are stronger. So I'm gonna pass it over to Heidi. She's gonna talk about some of the artifacts that we use in working with some of the staff in our year two.
I'll, I'll be brief. Jennifer said it very eloquently. Just the way this seems to me is that equity work is both a policy side, the, the practices and the policies that, and the vision that we have as a district, the hard work is in the personal. And what is the personal work that we do with ourselves in that reflective practice and with our students? And so the equity group that we are part of is really having that difficult, hard conversations of learning as a teacher again. What does it mean to be that learner again, so that I can better understand my students? And some of that is, in our practices as teachers, for example, visual literacy, um, and, and recognizing how does my understanding of race, equity, diversity, cultural proficiencies, what does that look like when I see an image? And so, um, putting together activities that we do within our cohort that they can then take back to their students in their classes. So the power of an image. What is that, what is that, what do you see? What do you understand? What is your first thought when you see this image? And recognizing and thinking in a very personal way, how, how am I bringing my own experiences? How am I bringing my own understanding of my worldview to my teaching that might not be accounting for the way that my students see the world and the way that they see this image? And are we all on a similar, can we have a common language? Can we have a common, open conversation that allows us to see and to, to grow? So this is one small artifact of a, of a, of work that we do that is both difficult, rewarding, challenging, and necessary. So thank you for supporting it and for allowing us to be part of it.
We, um, really wanna highlight the fact that this is a journey. So there are difficult times, there are difficult conversations. But the nice part of what we do is the reflection piece. Everyone is at a different place in their journey. So the reflection that we do with the staff, the reflection that we do with the students helps to build that path and change. And as we're going through that, it's nice to see that that is definitely happening. So again, thank you, thank you for your support, so.
You both are up the hot seat. Thank you. Um, Brian Turcot, Abigail Bergen. Um, stories from district equity team members. Both of them have been, um, in spaces for two years, working together. Um, Abigail has been phenomenal, bringing our student perspective. And she will be leaving us, we will miss her, but she promises that she will uh, carry on the work at Duke University. But wanted to give them an opportunity to just talk about the work from their perspective as well.
Sure. Um, I guess I can start. Uh, so like has been said, and I know Erin referenced it a little earlier. My name is Abigail Bergen. I'm a senior, uh, at the high school. I am the only student on the district equity team. I've been involved with, guess what? You emailed me, like, fall 2020, and were like, you should, you should do this. Um, and it's been great. And I can't thank you enough for giving me space for my boys and for the student perspective as a whole to be heard. I've been involved with equity work kind of at large, um, from about that time. I got involved with a year of courageous conversations the previous fall. Um, and then surrounding the summer 2020, I co-organized a Black Lives Matter protest, which was certainly, um, an, an experience. Uh, there were, uh, it was a phenomenal experience to see all of the community solidarity. And that's what gives me hope as we battle for a more equitable future for the district. And I also got involved with Be the Change Barrington, a policy organization made up of BHS students and alumni. I'd like to share some data from a survey they collected, uh, conducted in June of 2020 of about six-hundred-and-fifty Barrington people associated with the school district. Only seven-point-four percent of the respondents surveyed agreed that racism was being properly addressed in the district. Almost eighty percent of respondents believed that racism is a significant issue in the district. With that being said, something has to be done to fix that. Those numbers are from a representative sample, and, you know, that tells you that work needs to be done. That's where the district equity team has come in. Through years of dialogue and hard work, um, we've managed to bring a lot of different perspectives together. And I think that it's really important, from a student perspective, to prioritize understanding and respecting diversity, no matter what you do after high school. So I have a lot of friends that I know going to a bunch of different places. So Sophia, who was just recognized for a Fine Arts Award, uh, for an ACT score craziness thing. Amazing. Um, is headed off to MIT. I know people taking gap years. I know people, uh, joining the armed services. I personally am attending Duke University, where I'll be continuing this work by majoring in some combination of public policy, comparative studies, political science, and, uh, getting a certificate in civic engagement and social change. Is this too much? Absolutely. Will I figure that out when I get to it? Yes. Um, and so no matter where you go, and no matter what success looks like for you, prioritizing inclusivity and diversity is a gateway to facilitating multifaceted success. And I think that's one of my biggest takeaways from everything that we've done with the district equity team, um, over the past couple of years, is, you know, it's really valuable to be able to have conversations about difference and respect and value and cherish a diverse group of people at every age, whether it's really young kids or adults, and me in the Roslyn Road Gym. I think that, um, what really has stood out to me is that prioritizing empathy and respect and inclusivity are things that really matter at whatever age. Um, and I can't thank the equity team enough for doing such a great job laying the foundation of hopefully a more equitable future for Barrington. Thank you, Equity.
Well, hello, everyone. I'm Brian Turcot. I'm the social worker at Prairie Campus. This is my twenty-first year in the district. I think perhaps fourth or fifth time having the opportunity to interact with the, the board this way. So thank you, I always appreciate when you're listening to the work we're doing, um, out and about. I've been doing quite a bit of writing and revising since I was invited to be part of tonight's presentation, because I wanna be perfect when discussing such an important topic, hence reading rather than speaking off the cuff or trying to remember everything I'm hoping to say. I'll, I'll start by sharing an analogy I heard a number of years ago at a social work convention. The speaker was addressing the role social workers have and fill within the education process. That speaker reminded us that we, when we are building our student houses, reading, writing, math, and all the other content, subject matter courses are the bricks. Problem-solving, social-emotional learning, collaboration, resilience, self-advocacy, teamwork, coping. In short, the skills outside of the academic contents are the cement or mortar that builds strong foundations and hold everything together. The work we've been doing as a district equity team falls into this category of support and enhancement. I'm not sure everyone outside of schools is familiar with the term professional learning community, but it is a type of collaborative patient we talk about and strive for, for within education. The district equity team has functioned as a true professional learning community. I've been able to meet, connect, and work with a range of fellow educators and community members who share ideas, find and explore information related to our work, discuss successes, problem-solve regarding challenges, and learn from each other. It has been rewarding hearing all about what the district has been accomplishing for students across the district and within the 220 community. Our team has been able to share techniques, lessons, and strategies. I've no doubt our work has led to improved experiences and stronger foundations for all 220 students. You may have noticed I've yet to say diversity, equity, and inclusion outside of our team name. I've observed an unfortunate trend that some people have started to find negative connotations to those words. This is disheartening to me as a person, a social worker, and a professional educator. My social work training tells me that finding connections, looking for opportunities to elevate voices, and include others is important. I worry that social-emotional learning and mental health will soon be questioned as well. Before working on the district committee, I might have been scared to say and admit what I just did out loud in this venue. I've continued to learn that it is important to talk openly about topics that are vital to student success. My committee work gives me the courage to do so. When it is time to adjust our math curriculum, we may do research, ask questions, and even debate about the next best steps. We would not freeze and decide that we shouldn't continue to evolve our math curriculum. I hope that we can follow a similar path of continued work within the 220 community related to diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Thank you. One more, almost time, I promise. Bring us home. Katie Matthews and Zach Ernst.
All right. Uh, yeah, I'll start. Uh, I'm Zach Ernst. I'm the principal at Huff Street Elementary. And, uh, Katie and I are gonna share a little bit, um, about some of the administrative work and what the equity work we've participated in this year has kind of looked like, and then how that's kind of trickled down into kids. So Katie's gonna share a little bit about that. But this year, um, we've got the, we've been very fortunate, um, to be part of administrative equity cohorts. And, um, it's really been a, an introspective process that, that's, um, kinda, it started with some identity work, where groups of administrators got together, and we started doing beliefs and values activities and exercises. We, um, did some self-assessment and self-reflection. Um, and we had some scenario-based discussions. And, you know, through all of that, you, you know, I, I found myself, um, all of a sudden being uncomfortable, and I didn't think I'd be uncomfortable. And, uh, you really developed kind of a trust and a relationship among the people in the room. Um, and I think for an administrative team that hadn't been together in a couple of years, getting the chance, and, and me still being fairly new, this is only year two for me, it was a very vulnerable position to be in, as, in, in some cases, it was the first time I was in a room with some of the administrators. But as you filter that down, I think that's, that vulnerability, that willingness to talk openly and honest, honestly, and have the conversations is something we're trying to, um, kind of establish across the district. Um, I, I think all of this work, when we put the students at the center of everything that we do, um, it's very easy to get behind this work, because ultimately, and you've heard it said tonight, we want students to belong. We want students to feel like, um, they're represented and they feel included. And the work that we did as an administrative team is, has been, has caused me to think differently about interactions I have with parents, with students, with staff, and, and really thinking through, how are we making learning, belonging accessible to every kid in the community, every kid in the school? And those conversations help you take time to stop, kinda remain calm, think clearly, and, and listen, um, to other people's journeys. And think about, how is this gonna impact what we do on a daily basis in schools? And so with that being said, I wanna kick it over to Katie and kinda share a couple of examples of how that is kind of representative in what we do in schools.
Okay. Okay, so I, um, brought some pictures, because I think that it's very helpful to see the work in action and how this can potentially play out with students. Over the course of the last few years, the Grove staff has done several staff book studies together. Um, and one particular book that is an example, that has led our work with students, a book called Being the Change by Sarah Ahmed. And that has led to students sharing their name stories in our classrooms, creating identity webs, and, um, creating what we call I Am statements. And so the pictures and examples that I wanna share with you are some of the work of our students. Most recently.
You can too, if you.
Thank you.
Stinking.
This was my call. I think we need to drag it across. I'll keep tracking while they're working on it. So some second grade students created I am statements, things that they said about themselves.
I don't know if they interrupt here or keep going.
Yeah, go ahead. I am powerful, I am proud, I'm independent, I'm strong, I am brave. And they created visuals that went along with that. Then some fourth grade examples.
Now we're really stuck.
Some fourth grade examples that students said about themselves. I am a daughter, crazy friend, reader, scientist, swimmer, pianist, badminton player. I'm a sister, student, kind, tennis player, swimmer, and dancer. I'm an athlete, a writer, and a student. I am unique, I'm a pianist, kind, forgiving, and friendly. I'm a reader, a student, friendly and funny. And in doing that, and in this work, some of what we do is we have students go home and talk with their parents. And one of the activities that they do with their parents is come up with this story of their name and then come back to school and share the story of their name. So we ask them to go home and talk to their parents. How did you get your name? Why do you have the name that you have? What does your name mean? How do we pronounce your name? So part of us affirming students' identities, helping them to create their own identity and establish who they are as a person, is making sure that we know how even to say their name correctly. So these are pictures of the I am statements. And if you want to go back just one. Okay, well, these are fourth grade I am statements. But here's some examples of name stories that students came back to class with and shared with their classmates. My name is Evelyn Wong. My mom thought that the name Evelyn sounded pretty. Also, she wanted a Lin at the end of my name. I felt happy that my name was Evelyn and I am happy that I had a Chinese name. And so she shared that although her name is spelled W A N G, which phonetically it looks like Ling, it's pronounced Wong. And so now the teacher knows how to properly pronounce that student's name. She shared her Chinese name and what the Chinese name means and what the symbols in her Chinese name mean, King, good luck, and gem. Another student shared that his mom liked the name Daniel. His middle name was after his grandfather and his last name has a W that's silent. And he likes his name because it fits him. And finally, a student said, my full name is Nitya Patel. This is an Indian name. Nitya means every day. Patel is the surname of Indian people. My name is Avagadse. I feel nice because Nitya is a nice name. So in the classrooms, it's a way of us allowing students to share their culture, to share their backgrounds, and to understand each other's backgrounds and to build a culture of belonging. These are some examples of students' poems that they wrote. They're called Where Am I From poems. And they were given a format to follow, but then they included information about themselves in these poems to identify themselves. And actually, I have an example from the classroom teacher. I'd like to share with you this with the classroom teacher from first year. I am from paradise, from ready dropper to tie detergent. I am from apartment shag carpet, knotted, mud and tippy under my feet. I am from the willow tree. The hard workers and avid readers from Be Respectful and Be Careful. I'm from Buddhist temples and incense prayers. I'm from the Lo and Chang branch, chewy noodles and soy milk. From the grandparents who were pilots, the parents that emigrated. In my photo albums of my childhood from Taiwan and the US, I find my places, things, memories, traditions, and people of my dual origins. So as you can see, it's a way for our students and our staff also to share their cultures and embrace the differences that they have, but also find the similarities in their humanity. Another step that we have taken at Grove is working on diversifying the books that we have available to students. I want students to be able to see themselves, I want to see others, and books that can teach about having a minority of others in the community. And so in two twenty, we encourage diverse, all diverse libraries or primary and classroom for students in a variety of grades. And the books are designed to have books about everyone and for everyone. And we do one school read at Grove. We've done that for the last five years. This is just a highlight of two of the books that we've done. These are by diverse authors and about diverse characters. This year's book was Midsummer's Man, and it is about an Indian-American girl. And she is finding her place in her family. She's one of four children and she has three older siblings who are extremely high achieving in different areas, and she's looking for her niche in her family. And the story is about how does she find her niche in the family? And it actually happens to be through baking. And this offered an opportunity for us to learn about the Indian culture in our school. And students participated in different activities and games that were associated with Indian culture. One of the things that they learned about was Hannah. And they each treated Hannah's hand that we have right now hanging up in the school around Grove. And just one thing, it's a very simple thing, but you'll notice that the paper that was available to them is available in colors of different skin tones. So a lot of students are doing something as identifying their hand, which is very personal to you. You all have your own individual handprint, right? Your own individual fingerprints. Your color and your skin tone should be represented. And so that's just one very small thing that we can do in our schools to make sure that we're representing all of our students. And then that also did correspond with an activity that we did with our families. Because the theme of the book was about baking, we effort in May for families to come and share information about their cultures and specifically share different foods from their cultures or even traditions or just family favorites that maybe have meaning to them because of baking. And really, we want this to be something that we do with our students, but also a collaborative experience in our entire community.
To go back, if you would, hold on one quick second. I will go back to my original PowerPoint to close this up. Katie, I believe that you have my computer.
Just like our kids and their iPad.
And I panicked for a second. I was like, no, I don't.
Just as we're closing, I just wanted to just show some other wonderful inclusive opportunities that we have in the district. The one I would, wanted to highlight was our roundup article that was just written in May that really talked about our, a couple of our students and their experiences in the LBG BTQ plus community and just their experiences in the school. And I thought it was a wonderful way for the high school to wrap their arms around these students and then really give them an opportunity to provide some educational awareness about just what their lived experiences were. I clicked on this, but I know if I clicked on it, it'd take me another five minutes to get back to it, so I apologize. But if you don't have the article, I'd love for you to take a chance, an opportunity to read it, because again, it's about building empathy. And I hope that at least one kid read that article and looked at that and said, wow, you know, I never knew that those students had those experiences, but I certainly know that I felt the way that they have before. And just to make them think differently about how we operate in spaces. And so I really think that was a wonderful way to be inclusive at the high school. So kudos to them for doing that. Last, but certainly not least, a few other wonderful opportunities for equity and access. One of the goals that I had was trying to highlight at least half of our schools during this presentation, and then in the fall, I'd come back and try to highlight the other half. This is a huge shout out to Micah Corb and the folks at Countryside. If you look at this wonderful basketball tournament, it's not just about the tournament, and I'm sorry that this is smaller, but if I could direct your attention over here to the small little area over in the right there, it's a student that's in a wheelchair that's shooting a basketball. They were very clear in making sure that the community knew that this was all-inclusive and it was for all abilities. And I would so, I wanted to highlight like this because I so hope that as we continue this work, we continue to see this in other schools as well. In addition to that, Countryside is hosting a wild, I was going to call it a fireside chat, but it's a Wildcat chat. This is Amy Lechowitz and Natalie Pollak, one of the parents. And it's a way for foundation families to do two things. First, kind of come and get to know each other, but also an opportunity for them to come in and find out things that they can do with their sons and daughters and their children, leisurely activities that they can do over the summer when they're not in school. So again, just another wonderful way to show some of the inclusivity that's happening. And obviously, there is a little bit of the multicultural night that took place at Rose a couple nights ago, or I think it was last Friday. So just again, another wonderful opportunities for access and inclusivity throughout the district. That in mind, part of equity on the horizon, I've talked a lot about the preparations for cohorts for next year relative to making sure that our teachers have the opportunity to go through some of the experiences that we've had this year. So we will have teachers go through that. I talked to you in the fall about meeting individually with principals. I have done that. We have names. By June first, we will have all of our names locked in and dates assigned at each schools for us to do our building level cohorts next year, where they will go through similar experiences that our leadership has went through this year to, again, improve what we do in the classroom. Last but certainly not least, Dr. Hunt asked a great question when I prefaced this with the leadership team earlier this week, and he asked, Nate, what does this look like in the classroom? I thought that was a really great question to ask. And just as, as something to show you is, is we want people to be able to, through this work as teachers, there's roles of teachers and roles of site administrators as it relates to the cultural proficiency. We want them to be able to assess culture and its effect on students and assess the culture of the classroom. We want them to support students in discovering their own cultural identities. We'd like for them to teach all subjects from a culturally inclusive perspective, insist on classroom languages and behaviors that value differences, use conflicts as object lessons, you know, learn, and then most importantly, teach students appropriate language for asking questions about other people's cultures and telling other peoples about their experiences without there being this dissonance that happens. And so finding ways to develop those relationships and for students to be able to do that. So that is some of the end games of the professional development work that we do. That being said, you know, Erin talked a little bit about the website. We're going to continue to make that fluid, especially as we flip to our new website and creating more resources for families as we move forward. I know I would have been a little long. I thank you for that. I really wanted to make sure that our folks came in who stayed a little longer to talk about their shared experiences. And so with that being said, I am done, and I would certainly love to open it up for questions. If you have any.
That was a lot. Any feedback, comments, questions from the board?
This was nominal. I'm sad that all the board members can't be on the equity committee because there's so much, there's so much that I would like to dive into here. I have a question, but I also have a request. I've heard from the couple of board members who are on the equity committee that you share some very powerful resources and references, and I'm hoping you can do that for all the board. You know, I'm told there's like a Google Doc or something that you need access to. And I just, I'm so interested in, you know, I can't necessarily come to the meetings, but I would love to partake and then ask questions if there's questions. But my question for you, and this is, it's probably leaning towards the negative, and I don't want to be negative, but the feedback I've heard from some families is they don't want the word equity in our strategic planning. So are they, I just want to kind of get from your perspective. Is this something that people are threatened by? Or is there denial that we need this in our community? Why, you know, what are you hearing? Because I'm sure you're getting some of the pushback. Why?
I think that's a great question. And the first thing for me is one of the reasons why I started with the commitment to equity that we have as a district is a reminder of what the charge is. This is what speaks to the conversations that we were having at the time about why equity was important for us as a district. That being said, you know, sure, there are a lot of challenges with words that are happening a lot. And so even through the experiences that we've had when we were trying to develop our learning profile and developing documents, there's been challenges in language. What I would offer is that if someone has an issue or a challenge with the word equity, I'd love to hear that perspective. And what I mean by that is, what is that? I mean, let's have a conversation about those challenges because I think that, and again, from what you're hearing from this team, is a desire to make sure that all of our students feel inclusive and welcome. That is what our work is about. And to do that, I mean, you do have to think about equity. You do have to think about where we are as a district, where we want to go. And again, we just talked a little bit earlier about the Illinois State Board of Education and their challenge for us and challenge for districts as it relates to an equity journey continuum. So clearly, there is a push in our state that focuses schools on this term of equity. And again, I know it's a challenge. I know that for some folks, there is this belief that maybe it means something else. But I hope that through the conversations that we continue to have, through more awareness, through more conversations, that people begin to understand that what we're really talking about is being inclusive, right? And I hope that, you know, not to steal some of the thunder that's coming for next fall and some of the conversations that we're having about belonging and inclusivity, I certainly hope that some of the work that we do lessens some of the fears and anxieties as it relates to equity. Because again, it's really about making sure that all students have the opportunities to be successful in whatever success looks like for them. Does that help?
It does. Thank you.
And Barry, I want to thank you for asking a hard question because I think that's a question on a lot of people's minds. And I myself have gotten some similar questions in regards to that. And I think Dr. Rouse, to your credit, you know, I think you made a very poor distinction. One, I think it was Ms. Spicer was up talking about having diverse hires. I think it's very important to point out that, you know, in interviewing a diverse pool of candidates, the objective isn't necessarily lower standards. And I think that's a very important distinction because questions come up about, well, are we now focusing on hiring, for example, a Chinese person because for sole purpose that he's Chinese? And I am very pleased to hear, and I'm sure a lot of folks who are watching this are pleased to hear, that no, the objective is not to say we want to hire a Chinese person just because they're Chinese. They must be qualified as well. And I think that's, again, a very important distinction because I think in a lot of ways, to your point, Barry, folks get, you know, concerned that by broadly diversifying this pool, we're now going to lower the standards or even worse cater to a specific culture or a specific demographic. And, you know, again, I'm happy that is not the case. It's for all. And that's, you know, I think that should help us go a long way to, you know, kind of clearing that hurdle.
And I think it's important to keep the, an overarching goal too, is it's for our community and for our students to see themselves reflected, right, in our growing, you know, student population of color, neurodivergent students, we're at forty percent students of color, to see that in the staff, to see that in our administrators, right, to see that all around them. Because it's, I mean, for me, I didn't have a single teacher of color until college, right? And so I think it's a different experience. We have an opportunity to give a different experience for our students, and I think we're doing that. And I think it's important to continue it. But yeah, qualified is definitely a prerequisite.
Yeah, and I think that's the important distinction here. I'm with you, Eric. Like, I don't think I had a Chinese teacher myself until I was in college either. But, you know, I was very pleased with the fact that I had the most qualified teachers. And I think that's the objective we in two twenty have and should continue to have.
I think to parallel Barry's question, Nate, I've heard, so our board had an equity workshop that I think was about three hours or so earlier this year that I think we all thought was incredibly valuable. And we had facilitators from IASB come in, and they were talking about for their own strategic plan that they incorporated equity as both a lens with what you think, with the definition that you used, and also as a pillar to hold themselves accountable with regard to hiring and retention and, you know, curricula, right, and safety and protection. How would you, in thinking about equity, if we were to commit to say, well, we've made all these commitments already, how do we hold ourselves accountable? What would you say is the most effective way or some effective ways to incorporate it in our strategic plan and to be explicit about it?
I mean, to be honest, I think the word intentionality comes to mind. I think in a district where we are trying to move towards a more equitable outcomes, we have to be a little bit more intentional because that's a constant reminder. When equity is something that is not a lived experience for you or something that you don't see every day, you have to make it something that you see every day. And a way to make it something is by putting it somewhere so that, again, it is there as a constant. In addition to that, as you're saying, Erin, I think that the premise would be that you would have would have, you know, Equity inclusion as a pillar, if you will, but at the same time, you want to make sure that Equity is embedded in everything you do. Because if you don't do it that way, then it's just off to the side, and then you think that, okay, well, this particular part of the organization is just going to focus on Equity. That's kind of a little bit of the problem right now. I am the Director of Equity, Race and Diversity, but I will also tell you that people constantly ask me, how come you talk about race? Or how can you talk about Equity? Or how can you talk about things? Or why aren't you talking about these areas in the organization? And that makes a lot of sense, but that just shows you also how siloed our approach has been. And so again, having it there to be intentional is really, really critical for us as we're learning to be a district that strives to be more equitable. I think that's what's important about seeing it for me as an individual that sees it in our Board of Education commitment to our Equity Statement. I think that's something that we're going to have to continue to see as we move forward. Again, but again, intentionality, I think is the most important because if we're not intentional, it's something unfortunately we will miss because it's not something that we always see every day.
I think people get caught up, and I think you articulated this well here. I think people get caught up in thinking that Equity perhaps only addresses race, and I think you guys did a great job of showing that that's not the only, I mean, there's disabilities, there's cultures, there's difference in learning.
Absolutely.
And you, when you spoke at Roslyn, you said a year of, we want it to be a belonging for our children. And I think that that is such a great thing to point out because it does mean so much more, and you guys did such a great job of grasping that here. Thank you.
Let me ask another question. This kind of got, this went, we went through this pretty quickly, but on Slide 19, there's a reference to culturally responsive teaching. I know that's been another term that's gotten a lot of press in recent months, or recent years with regards to, you know, what that means. Can I trouble you to kind of define that for us?
Well, I'd love to give an example for you.
Perfect.
And I'm going to date myself with this, so I apologize. How many of you remember we're on per room?
Oh, yeah.
Seriously. What was the first thing that she said when she got the kids in the circle? Okay, see, I'm dating myself. She said, I see, right? And then she said, I see Bob, I see Barry, I see Steve, okay? You remember sitting there and hoping you hear your name, right? And then many times, you didn't.
Right.
Okay, so let's think about that philosophy as it relates to culture, okay? Kids need to see themselves in what they do. The engagement that's required in classes is more than just the Xs and Os, is more than just the academics. Kids need to see themselves in what they're learning. And so what culturally relevant teaching does is it requires us to think about that as we prepare our lessons. A very small, simple example is my seventh grader last night is doing eye-ready math problems. He has a story problem in math, and all of the names happen to be Hispanic. Well, what's cool for him is because he's taking Spanish, now he's practiced rolling his Rs and some other things. But the key is, is that students can actually see themselves in that math problem, okay? And so as we teach, we want to make sure that we're culturally responsive to the kids that are in our classroom so that they are more engaged. Absent that engagement sometimes, Steve, what happens is it's that Charlie Brown teacher that we all know in here, it's the blah, 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 and the words don't speak to you. Education is different now, and our kids are different now because of their attention spans and a lot of things, so we have to engage more. And so what culturally responsive teaching does is allows us to respond to the cultures we see. And the reason that we're doing that is remember, in our state, as we look at our demographics, our demographics have shifted mightily so that there is far more cultures in schools than there have been in the past. And as a result of that, the state has said, okay, we need to shift our thinking and make sure that students can see themselves in the teaching and learning that happens so that that improves the overall education experience for everyone. That's the real CRT.
That's the one that, yeah, gets.
I know. Tell me about it. Tell me about it.
And I think it's important that we as a district distinguish.
Culturally responsive teaching.
I think one great point is that if, when, if and when we embed Equity into our strategic plan is to, what Katie was talking about, have common language.
Have the specific.
And so that we don't have fear around the word Equity and that we're all understanding it's fostering this culture of belonging and where every student can have access, right, to the resources that they need.
I just wanted to take a moment just to reflect on the past two presentations we had and how tightly coupled they really are, right? We just heard about all these great learnings and what our staff is telling us, and relationships are important, and SCL is important, and it all ties into these great examples that you guys shared with us from administration, how they need to behave, to the examples of the students in the classroom. It's all very, very powerful, and it's, I think this, I hope everybody takes opportunity to listen at least to this portion of the board meeting tonight because I think it's, it was very, very powerful. So I thank each and every one of you for sharing what you did, what we've done, the work that we've done. And I'm really, I mean, I think even to see the student was a very powerful way to think about things this year too. You know, every time, every time we get together as a board, every time I read something on the website, I think, wow, look at that, you know, you really, you know, get down to their level, get, you know, and learn about them. And just taking the few minutes to have different colored handprint papers.
Little things are big.
Yeah, little things are big.
Thank you.
Hey, I'd like to say something if now is a good time.
Go ahead, Leah. Reminding us that she's there.
Once again, but this is so amazing. I just want to say such a big thank you to Nate Rouse for all the work you've done. I want to say a big thank you to Barb Spicer, Heidi Rockwell, Jennifer Robinson, Brian Turcot, Abigail Bergen. We're going to miss you so much. Off you go to college. Zach Ernst, Katie Matthews, and everybody who's on the Equity team this year. It's been a wonderful journey. I thank everybody who's at the school teams and the cohorts because there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes that everyone's not aware of. And this is so important for our students. It's super important for our students, especially in these hard times when there's shootings in supermarkets and there's terrible hate crimes. Like, I love our students and want them to feel cared for and appreciated and safe in our school. And so I appreciate the work you're doing, and I'm babbling a little, but anyway, I also think that it's super important, and I'm hearing from the community through emails and phone calls, that it's important that we are strong about Equity, Diversity, Inclusion in our strategic plan and our walk against anti-racism in Framework 220. And these coffees and people are coming together. There's some people who are uncomfortable with some of our words, but we want our community to be inclusive and welcoming to all of our students, and it's so important. And so I appreciate all of you, and I thank you so much. And I just am supportive of the work going forward and commend you so much. So thank you.
Thank you. Sorry so long.
No, it's very good. Very, very good. Okay, that's going to be tough to follow if what is going to, oh, actually, we have a community feedback conversation next. Oh, I just lost my connection here. So thank you again. So last board meeting, we talked about seeking out feedback from the community on how well we've been, how well we've done in the last year. So Steve, do you want to share your ideas?
Yeah, sure.
That you wanted, that we?
And first of all, I want to say that I think it should happen probably June 3rd or later, just so that it's not interfering with the coffees that we have planned. It's also not interfering with graduation and that type of planning. But I think, yeah, to your point, we should have some sessions where we're allowing the public to come in and, you know, have, you know, access to all of us on some level to talk about not just what we've done well, but also things that we could do better too. Allow for that honest feedback. So, you know, I had two ideas as to how we can structure this. You know, one was to do a session at each of the elementary schools and maybe have at least two board members, and so we can call them official meetings if need be, if we have more than three, but providing some times where, you know, hopefully we can have at least two board members. So that's one option. A second option would be that we have, you know, actual meetings, so four, but essentially just the public comment section of those meetings at each of the middle schools. And, you know, Katie had an interesting idea, so she and I had talked about this briefly too. We had discussed the idea of possibly having town halls that are dedicated to specific topics. So, you know, a few that come to mind for me are, you know, pandemic response, virtual learning, so maybe let's kind of go together, but, you know, curriculum additions and deletions, you know, funding for the fine arts. I mean, we can put, you know, like I said, topic-based sessions together, and, but if we go that route, I would say that we probably need to do more than two. So probably having it at each of the elementary schools might be the best way of going about doing that. But I guess, you know, admittedly, I know this is a big lift for all of us. I mean, candidly, I don't have that much time either, but I do think it's important for us to kind of, you know, start that conversation of how we can put ourselves out there. And I acknowledge that we have these board meetings, we have public comments, we have the ability to email, but I think sometimes it would be better just to be out there and, you know, be able to just sit with folks. And like I said, maybe not necessarily have a coffee, but be in a public forum where folks can access us individually. Because I know, you know, for folks who know me, they don't mind stopping me, but for folks who don't, I know I've heard of instances where they say, you know, I saw you at Jewel, but I didn't want to stop you. And I can certainly appreciate that, but again, just providing yet another venue for folks to reach us. And, you know, the more I think about it, the more I realize that I think we need administrative support, but we can minimize it by, you know, not troubling Dr. Hunt's. We can, you know, ideally, we could put these on YouTube, so I guess that would involve some IT assistance, but I don't know, I'm open to whatever the board thinks. Those are just kind of my broader ideas and, you know, something that Katie and I discussed broadly off cuff. One thing that I did also want to mention that I thought would be really helpful, and I mentioned this last time too, and I think we could, you know, piggyback off of some of Dr. Hunt's work that he's already done, but it's also putting together a list of accomplishments that I'd like to share with the community. You know, some of the things that Dr. Hunt and his team have done over the last year, I mean, there's been so much that I think we can list, and I think it would be worthwhile to have those as just a, you know, a, just a example of all the great things that this district has produced over the last, you know, whatever it is, 12, 18 months, however you want to frame it time-wise. So I'm going to stop there.
So I want to make sure, and the very first sentence you said was you were thinking about doing this after June 3rd, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. So one thought I had was, while you were talking was, this is a great thing to add into our goals even for the next year.
As in ours, when we do our summer session? Got it.
What are our priorities for the year?
Yeah.
Then we can be thoughtful about it. I really like this idea of the different topics, and maybe we can even tie it into things and events that are already happening, so that it is a little bit less of an administrative burden.
Can I offer to you, in terms of timing, I think that we maybe could think about how we want to structure this and set it up over the summer because I feel like people's minds are shifting to like, summer vacation! I don't, I think the last thing they might be thinking about is like, let me give feedback to the board. But as the school year starts, maybe we can like plan, start planning how we're going to do this, and then maybe we use the new school year to like kick things off potentially. And then people's minds will be more kind of shifting toward, okay, it's the new academic year, this is a feedback, just in terms of timing and what, where people's attention spans are too.
That's fair. Because you're right, summer vacation will play a role in that as well. But I feel like as the school starts, then it's back to, you know, the pride for the administration, everybody else. So there's that to take into account.
We can be intentional, right? We can be intentional, right?
We can be purposeful, we can spread them out. I mean, I'm thinking like, people have an arsenal, internet safety. We've got like, you know, learning loss, SCL, like, there's so many different things. So I think if we do, I like it being part of our board goals and set up an intentional schedule for all of us to commit to perhaps participating in one, you know, at least one, and trying to minimize the work on the district.
So if, and this has shifted, I think, from our initial conversation, if we're shifting towards a topic-oriented town hall conversation, we have to have the experts that work in those areas at these events.
I mean, I worry if it's all ended, then.
Well, you know, is it? No, I get it. Yeah, I get it. But I just, then it becomes more topic-based information. If you take digital citizenship, I want Matt Fuller and I want his team.
I want Matt Becker.
Yeah, so to talk about the things that we are doing so we can, one, promote those and encourage people to utilize those and then have that dialogue.
Well, does it necessarily though need to, because I appreciate what you're saying, Dr. Hunt, because what you're basically doing is you're saying that you want to have the staff available to answer questions. For me, it's more of a question gathering session though, because I don't know if we'll necessarily have the answers, but we'll at least have directives from our constituents to say, here's what I want to see happen. And whether we do it or not is a separate matter, but I think it's something that we can at least all aggregate and bring back to administration.
So here's an idea.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I think a few years ago, we tried to schedule our board meetings as a once-a-month board meeting and a once-a-month community of the whole. And I think we did that for a full year, maybe? I think that we had to make some exceptions because there were things that we had to vote on and, but.
What does that mean, Angela? Sorry.
We had one business meeting and one community of the whole meeting each month. So instead of two working board meetings, we get all of our stuff done the first board meeting or whatever, as you guys decide on the agenda. And then the second meeting, it would be topic-based. Sometimes there would be a presentation from the administration, usually that was what it was. This was the very first year I was on the board. For me, it was incredibly helpful because I learned so much, and I was the only newbie on the board, so I almost felt like I was dragging everyone else down, but I think it was a good refresher as well, but.
It's a cool idea.
We could maybe change it a bit to that the community of a whole is, you know, more of this town hall structure.
It's a really cool idea.
As, as a, you know, piece of the puzzle. I don't know in practicality how it will work. You know, I don't know, I mean, things pop up that we have to vote on, and I know that it creates some shuffling at the last minute, but it's a potential, especially as we're trying to be cognizant of everyone's time and the effort that, you know, the staff would have to put into it. This wouldn't really increase staff efforts and preparation, it would just kind of change the focus.
There's certainly districts that focus, they have a business meeting, you know, to cover approvals, things of that nature, and then more like these discussion items we pulled out and put into a second meeting. That's certainly a direction that could, you know, we could consider.
That's right, we would all be here because we're already kind of pegged to already do this. That's such a great idea.
Maybe we can almost pick like four, you know, like.
Right, maybe.
Like a quarterly thing.
Mm-hmm.
Where that happens.
Can you take this, you know, can you guys go back and think about this a little bit more and?
I would say, Steve, though, I do.
I don't know how they're going to respond if I told them.
We need our genius bar.
You guys, we should have this a bigger day. I would say though, I do think an open dialogue, I know that you said more of an aggregating question. I will say the biggest criticism I get is the lack of open dialogue. So I do think an opportunity to ask a question and receive a response is important.
Some informal, so still have some informal, you could almost have, I don't know, I'm just making the sausage here, right, but you can have that committee of the whole and then have a follow-on, you know, that Saturday morning or something after the board meeting to ask more comments and have some smaller group discussions or something.
So you were going to do that format where we sat in front and answered questions, wheelhead talks?
Yeah.
Was that about the referendum? I can't remember.
I think it might have been about the referendum, but it was, you know, I think, you know, didn't have the cameras, didn't have, you know, it was just really a, just a dialogue. We did it on the GRC, I remember, was it the GRC?
People liked that.
I think you get, I think we have to define what it is the board is trying to accomplish with this.
Right. People liked that.
I think you get, I, I, I think we have to define what it is the board is trying to accomplish with this.
Right.
So my, my thought process, and you guys, you know, check me if you have a different idea here, is I wanted to find a way for folks to be able to reach us and solicit, you know. And for us to solicit their true feedback of what we're doing as a district and how we can be better. Because ultimately we, we report to them, all of us. And so, you know, I know some people email, some people come and do public comment. This is just another means to providing a platform for folks. And, you know, I was actually going to say, we, I would like these recorded, but maybe we don't want these recorded. Because I, because I do feel like there are situations where folks are nervous to speak on camera, that this still gives them access to us without interrupting us while we're, you know, grocery shopping.
Right. Well, I think, I don't know exactly what I want the, the, what I want out of this, but I will say this. I think that as publicly elected officials, you know, we can all kind of subscribe to the, the narrative, which is, well, if you're doing a good job, you'll find out at election time. Right? And so that's, that's kind of your, your two year check in, four year check in, whatever.
Yeah.
But, you know, I don't like that because we're affecting the lives of children for those two years. And I don't really think that the, the mindset should be, go for it and then we'll see what happens at the ballot box.
Right.
So I, I like this, the concept that you're speaking of. I don't under, I don't know, I don't know exactly what my goal is, as you put it very bluntly, like what is your goal?
Right.
I don't know. But I, I would say what I think would be nice is if we intentionally try to come up with ways that we can change and alter what we're doing.
In the long term.
Yeah, throughout the whole process that we're publicly elected officials, not just waiting for the next election.
So that, that's what I, I think I'll need to reflect on. There's changing the structure of how we do our meetings is one way. And then there's creating events in which people have the ability to access you and provide feedback. If you're looking to create events, that can be done. You could piggyback it with meetings that are happening in buildings. You can hold an event where people can come in and, and talk to you. I think that's what I'm going to need clarity on and we can, we can certainly dialogue and bring some thoughts back to you. But trying to understand what it is you want to attain out of this is important.
Almost feels like it's part of our, you know, annual workshop too, reflecting back on evaluating ourselves and what we can do differently too.
Yeah, I think the seven of us can certainly meet and talk about where we think we've been successful and where we, you know, not been quite successful.
I agree with Sandra that maybe we can bring this up at our workshop. Sorry, I, it's hard to hear who's talking. I apologize, but yeah, this is something we could talk about at our workshop. Because we've talked about open communications there before and how it's really important for the board to be open with the community and what's the best way to do it? And maybe we can get some input about what other boards are doing. Because that would be helpful to know what's an effective way to do that.
Yeah, and if we're really going to be listening and potentially doing a committee of the whole, I think accessibility is important. Like when Dr. Hunt did his listening sessions, like he moved, right? Like he didn't say, oh, come to me. I think it's important if we want to hear from all parts of the community to, to go where different parts of the community can access us, right?
That's what we did that year. We had a, we had a meeting at each of the different buildings.
Yeah.
So the, we had like the business meeting at one spot, but every time our community of the whole, or committee of the whole moved.
How was the engagement? Was it pretty high or?
Well, it was different because it wasn't necessarily opening it up to community members to have open dialogues. It was like, um, Dr. Winkleman would give a presentation about, I don't know, whatever. And then we would ask kind of in-depth questions, but it was a more, you know, it wasn't like there are three presentations on the agenda. It's about, well, and actually that's like where Dr. Fuller came forward the very first time and talked about blended learning. And, and, and so the community kind of showed up to hear, what is this blended learning? You know, what, but it wasn't really a Q and A as much as I think Steve is suggesting, which, you know, I like that as well. But, so I think the engagement was more topic specific, not necessarily venue specific. I could be wrong though.
I like that you rotated.
I think we want to be careful though, Steve, we've kind of come full circle. Because initially you said kind of, we want feedback and let's just have open mic. And then now you've said, well, let's talk about specific subjects. I, I like to go back to just open mic. We're available, people want to have a dialogue, so let's be available to them and not limited to, you know. You came up with all these topics which are all germane, but I, I'd rather just let people decide what the agenda is going to be. And, you know, if, if people want a dialogue instead of, because, you know, usually the, the public comment, we don't really respond back right away. We let the administration do that. If, if we want to have a dialogue, then let's plan on that, maybe quarterly, Saturday or, or, as, as you said, if there's something else going on, like maybe a couple of the back to school nights, we can piggyback onto those. But just leave it open ended and don't, you know, don't limit people's participation.
Yeah, and if the board has interest in topic specific town halls, I mean, we, we hosted a town hall this year. Most of the engagement second semester has been around framework two twenty and strategic planning. We certainly could do topic specific. I mean, I know there's parent universities, we, we could handle that administratively with board members, you know, attending or not. If this is truly about engagement, then find a way that you're comfortable in doing it, whether it's a couple of people go to. Yeah, whether it's people, you know, split up two per building and, you know, it's a Saturday morning and offer bagels and let people come in. And what do you want to accomplish and then we can figure out the venue.
I think it's tricky because we have a lot of things we want people to engage with and people are busy and they're stretched. You know, we really want the input for the framework. We have the referendum meetings, you know, when school starts, piggybacked onto the back to school night. So it's, it's just hard to stretch people so thin, you know? I, I don't know, it's hard to figure out.
Well, maybe we can all take this conversation back, reflect on it and think about what we want the priorities to be for the coming year. And continue to have the conversations with each other and.
If Dr. Hunt, if you have suggestions, let us know.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay.
Been around this block.
Not this one.
Not this particular block.
Come on, every day it can close that job for us, not really.
All right. Do we have any agenda items that we need to talk about for June seventh? We've got a recognition planned, the student discipline committee report will be on the consent agenda, the hazardous crossing resolution will be on the consent agenda. The school calendar, the final approval for this, this year's school calendar will be on the consent agenda. And we're going to have a presentation on solar.
Yay.
Talk about topics, fun topics.
I'm laughing that we're approving this year's school calendar.
I think we, it's, we have to do to say the last day.
Yeah, I like, I'm here for it.
We gotta do it.
Huh? I was like, no.
You can't get that calamity back.
Anything anybody wants to add? Now, reminder again, since I said it wrong before, we will start at five P M on, on June seventh. Shall I ask, do we have a motion to adjourn?
First we have to do a closing.
Oh, yeah. Close, close.
Close.
Sorry. Sorry. Do we have a motion to approve the confidentiality of closed session minutes?
So moved.
All right, voicemail?
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Sandra Rappert.
Yes.
Erin Channing.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Leah Colister Lozari.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Barry Altschuler.
Yes.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the opposition? All right.